All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 9th, 2024 meeting of the Fitchburg Zoning Board. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, I would ask everyone here to place all electronic devices in silent mode, including myself, so that we may enjoy each other's company uninterrupted. We're going to open this meeting by standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. McLaughlin, would you please lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Play ball.
Right. So, we are going to hear review matters on this agenda first. Generally, we may call them out of order at the discretion of the chair between 6:00 PM and 6:30 PM. We have other remaining matters after that. In looking at our agenda, we do have a substantial number of reviews on here. So, I do expect that we may run after 6:30 addressing the reviews for anybody who is here for one of the substantive matters. That being said, I'm going to call the first matter on our agenda. That is ZBA 2327, Zero Cobbler Drive. This is a review of a special permit under Section 181.313 E5 of the Fitchburg Zoning Ordinance to open a contractor's yard and erect a 4,000-square-foot steel building to be used for storage pursuant to Section 181.94 located in the industrial district. Is anybody here on behalf of the owner or petitioner? All right. Welcome, sir. Could you please sit at the table and let us know your name and city of residence for the record?
My name is Mac Burrito, and I live in Lancaster, Mass.
All right. Welcome to the meeting. Thank you for coming. So, you were granted a special permit to erect an industrial storage facility, and this was across the street from your existing business, Frito Oil. Can you please give us an update on what the status is right now, how things are progressing?
About two, three weeks ago, we had the land broken out or started to dig and survey and level for the foundation. They dug the footing area out, discovered some inappropriate material. We had to get an engineer in. Last Thursday, we received the approval from the Building Department that we can, based on those tests, that we can go ahead. The work, the footings were planned for this week. Could be tomorrow, could be Friday. It got delayed because of a couple of weeks because of all this material, so they had to reschedule everything. So, we will actually be starting this week. They'll have the footings, they should have the footings poured, and progress should be made. The building is on site. It's an erector-set building, so it's laying there on site because we thought we'd be putting it up at this point. So, we're just close.
On the assumption that there's no other unexpected findings during the construction process, what do you anticipate to be the estimated time to completion?
I'd say we should be sometime in October.
Okay. Great. I'm going to review the conditions of the special permit with you, and where necessary, I'm going to ask you to respond to where you are on them. Some of them may not yet be applicable, some of them may be.
Okay.
So, the first condition was that the project was to be completed within 12 months of the date the decision was filed with the city. That was in February, so you have a long time to go on there. And if you're projected to complete in October, even if you complete in November, hopefully it will be well within that timeframe.
Okay.
Now, you did have to go to site plan approval before the planning board, and any conditions within that plan were to be incorporated into the special permit. I think that's more of a review that we're going to take at the end of the
Talking about like the fence and things like that?
Mm-hmm. So, which brings me to the next condition, which was that the existing chain-link fence bordering Cobbler Drive shall be replaced in the new chain-link fence, kept in good repair. What is the status on that?
It's, nothing's moved yet because we're waiting to, as the progress of the ground gets moved.
Okay. Thank you. Construction is in conformity with the plan submitted and dated September 5th, 2023. Were there any major changes during the planning?
No, no changes.
Okay. There's to be landscaping installed along the chain-link fence bordering Cobbler Drive. Again, I think that's a fence first, landscaping second.
I have a question on that, but that would have to go to zoning, right? The question?
But we are at zoning.
I mean, or whoever gave me that condition.
This board?
It's like, why would I have to put a chain-link fence back up versus landscaping trees? I just question that.
Sure. So, the board, first of all, the board can impose conditions as part of its decision process, and various members have various reasons for voting for a condition.
Okay.
So, I couldn't answer that as to everyone. I can tell you that my motivation in voting for that particular condition was that it's a contractor's yard, there are dangerous tools and equipment there, and I did not want any unauthorized persons, particularly children, to wander in there and hurt themselves. And thus, the fence in good condition along the border with Cobbler Drive seemed a good idea, a good condition to impose, particularly where the prior fence was, I think it was in less than good repair over time. So, I do want to say, and I'll say this again at a later point, your very good job in the upkeep and maintenance of your other property was a major factor for me in the approval of what you wanted to do here, because seeing that you were able to well-maintain that property, especially in that area where there are industrial uses going on, I think speaks to your ability to care for the property and be considerate of other people.
Thank you.
Going on, exterior storage to be located near the rear of the property line. So, that's not the building, it's anything that's outside because it is a contractor's yard, and it is allowed. And then, the site to be kept clean and free of construction debris during construction. So, I'll have one comment on that, and this may be the factor of just seeing the place at a moment in time and not over the long term. When I did go visit the property over the weekend, there was a large amount of like rubbish and trash debris, glass broken in the street right going into the entrance.
In the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right before the entrance. And then, the overgrowth in front of the chain-link fence is quite a thing. So, if you can, at some point, take
Well, I certainly can address the overgrowth. I mean, that should come down with the fence. That's part of the plan. I do think that the rubbish that's in the road is, I mean, am I bound to clean the street from the waste management, from wind waste? I think that's
In general, no. This was, however, right in front of the entrance onto the site.
Okay. And you know what? They actually do a fairly good job of picking up debris, but I'll get through it.
But I do know that the other companies that operate there, and they're creating issues that you are certainly not responsible for. So, all right. So, that's a review of the conditions. I'm first going to go to public comment and then see if a board member has any other questions. Is there any person here in the building who would like to make a comment on for or against this review? Is there any person virtual? All right. So, our building commissioner would like to make a comment. Mr. Commissioner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. So, Mr. Burrito has applied, as he said, for his building permit. I have tentatively authorized him to start foundation and framing. We're still waiting on sign-offs from a couple of departments for that, namely, engineering and water department. And we have a bunch of deference submittals before he can actually get his full building permit. But he does have a foundation and framing, he does have approval from my office for foundation and framing currently. And he applied for that on June 11th.
I believe that was in June, sir.
I'm not sure I understood all that he said.
He was giving an update on the permitting process within the building department.
So, I think we can do, my understanding is we can do the footings.
Yes.
I know he's waiting, we're waiting for the architect to finish the plumbing and heating electrical end of it. I think that's in progress at this point.
I believe he stated that there was an approval for the framing to begin. I don't know if framing is done with the put-together building, but
Yes, that would be, in being able to put together the erector set. But everything that goes inside the erector set has to wait until it gets the other plans.
Okay. Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. All right. Is there any other person online who would like to speak or make a comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the board members. Mr. Byrne, any comments?
No, no questions.
Okay. Mr. Talbot, any comments or questions?
No questions.
Mr. Gallagher?
Happy to see the project moving forward. Good luck to you.
Yeah, both are.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
Joe and I were there yesterday, didn't see any trash, so somebody must have picked it up.
Yeah, I did.
I'm there daily, and I
Yeah.
I think I know when you were talking, but it's not there now.
Right. But, you know, everything looks like it's on track to be what it should be.
Start.
Yeah, yeah. Always takes longer. Refresh me, is there going to be outside storage once it's completed?
Yes, it's actually the storage that's there now. The same pipe is there.
Gotcha.
They're moving the tenant from my building into his own building.
Okay, okay. But the
It's big, long
The black iron pipe, that will remain outside?
It's a poly pipe. It's, so it's a very heavy, long pipe.
Okay. Thanks. I don't have any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Byrne?
Who abuts your property in the back?
Peter Carlson, Calco.
On his property? You must see his property, that big pile of tires that had been there for years that have trees growing through them and stuff like this. Is that his?
No, the front side is
On the left before we get to your lot?
Okay, yes, I call it the front side. That would be John LaStella.
John who?
LaStella, from, I think he's northeast
And he owns the trailers that are there, too?
To the best of my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question from the board?
I can make a small comment, and I'm not, it's not 100%, but as I go through there, he had a rubbish company there that vacated or he moved out, and he's emptied that lot now, and I think what he's left with is a few trailers and those tires. What he's planning, I'm not sure, but it was considerably worse when
He must
Rent a junk or junk, one of those junk
Multi-thousand dollars' worth of shingles over there, too. What are they, shakes for roofs? Many pallets of them. Beautiful, beautiful stuff for roofs.
He is a roofer. He's a, he's a commercial roofer by trade.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Byrne? Okay. Do you have anything further to add before we close?
I'm all set. As you bow.
So, at this point, I'm just going to go to the board members. The permit holder has indicated an expected completion date of October. I would like to see you once the building is completed, just to make sure that all of the conditions have been completed.
Okay.
Board members indicate whether a November or December review would be preferred?
Why don't we let him notify us when he is completed so that we could set up a hearing for him the next month after he is finished?
All right. Any other board members? Okay. So, with that suggestion, the onus would be on you, the burden would be on you to schedule a hearing with us. You can schedule
Once I get the occupancy permit.
Right. So, we're going to, what we're going to do, and what we're doing at this hearing today is reviewing whether you've complied with the conditions so that we can stop reviewing you and make sure that the conditions are complied with. I don't want to let it go forever.
Oh, no.
Yep. So, what I'd like to do is set a date that is over the one-year mark, so for the March 2025 meeting. And if you did nothing, you would be before us for review at that meeting. But allow you to request a sooner hearing when you believe you have complied with all the conditions and the construction has been completed. Okay? You do need to give us adequate notice because we need to publish, so about a month before we can get you on the next month's hearing.
Okay.
All right. So, with that suggestion, what I'd like to do is have a motion to continue the review, modifying the review date to March
2025.
Mercedes. Sorry.
So moved.
March 11th, 2025, and within that review date stating that the permit holder may
ask for a sooner review upon 30 days' notice. So moved, Mr. Byrne?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? All right. So, let us know if you're ready earlier, but otherwise, we'll see you in March 2025. All right. Good luck with the construction.
Thank you.
Have a good lot.
The next matter is ZBA 2023-12, 219 Highland Ave. This is a review of the special permit under Section 181.94 to reinstate the Variety Convenience Store in the existing pizza store pursuant to Section 181.313 located in the residential B district. Is there anyone here on behalf of the property owner to speak on this review? Is there anyone online on behalf of the property owner to speak on this review? Is there any person in, present in the building who would like to speak on for or against the review? Is there any person online who would like to speak on for or against the review? Mr. Gobral, I see your hand raised. All right. So, if you can unmute yourself, you're welcome to speak on the review.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Thank you very much.
How are you, sir?
Good. How are you today?
I am good, thank you. Could you please update us on what's been going on at your store since we last saw you?
Yeah, for the convenience store before, I was have like a family issue, so I'm not be able to open it. And then, I did all the steps. This only missing, it's not only missing one step about the parking lot plan. So, right now, I have a new one, but I think with no parking. And then, right now, I'm not like able to spend between $2,000 or $3,000 for only the parking for the plane. And then, also, I'm trying to find the good people to manage the store with me, because my, another pizza shop or the kitchen already has a doing grade, and then, I'm always keep the customer happy, and then, I can imagine for the kitchen with the customers.
Okay. So
And then, I keep the food safety for them. So, I try to find the good people to manage the other, another store.
So, altogether, you're trying to find good people to manage another store.
Yes.
You've been busy and had family issues and haven't been able to get the parking plan submitted.
Yeah, yeah, because at this time, it's not be able to spend around $2,000 or $3,000 for the parking.
Are, do you have any planned date at which you're going to be able to proceed with the store?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any date on which you believe you'd be able to proceed with the Variety Store?
Like, when?
Yes.
I like, as much, as much time the board could allow me, because I'm trying to make it good as much as I can, as doing with the kitchen.
Okay. Sir, our building commissioner is asking to speak, so Commissioner Zamel, could you please contribute?
Sure. Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. Just reiterating what Mr. Gobral said, we haven't received any building permit applications or anything for that work and haven't seen any of these plans, which lines up with what he was saying. Macario's Market does have an existing certificate of occupancy and certificate of inspection, but nothing for the convenience store.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Is there any other person present who wishes to make a comment on this matter? Mr. Cordio?
In this gentleman's defense, I bought campus pizza back in 2016, and when I purchased campus pizza then, we had the Variety Store. In 2018, we did away with it because we wanted more room for the students, so we pushed coolers back for more seating. We were very busy at the time with Spree Day and everything, so as long as I've grown up in that neighborhood, I grew up on Highland Ave, so I started working there when I was about 12, because there was always a Variety Store. And hindsight, I would have never got rid of it when I sold it to Mr. Gobral, and that is a very important part for them college students, because a lot of them kids don't go out in cars, they're walking down the CVS, the foot of the hill. When they can walk to the top of the hill and get the basic, you know, toilet paper and all that stuff, it's important. I took it away because we didn't have room for it, but in hindsight, he would still have that Variety Store, because I took it over with a Variety Store permit back in 2016. So, I just wanted to say that on his behalf.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cordio. And just so the public understands, he was granted a special permit to operate the convenience store, but has not been able to fully satisfy the conditions to open, and I think is having some private personnel issues that are unrelated to the city. All right, I'm going to go to board member comment. Mr. Byrne, any questions?
No.
Mr. Talbot, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
He has what, two years to start it, through a special permit process?
Yeah. It's a 2023 application. I can tell you the date of approval in a moment. So, we have another year left.
Yeah. So, maybe just put it on for review for a year?
I agree. I don't
Gives him some time to
Mr. Gobral, given that it's been quite a while, I'm not sure that you're going to open the convenience store, but we have permitted you to do so. And I'm also inclined to put this off to the maximum date. And if you are able to satisfy the conditions before then, you are welcome to come back to the board before then, but until such time that you've satisfied the conditions, we're not gonna, you won't have the ability to get the certificate of occupancy. So, that being said, I'd look for a motion on the continuance of the review, modifying the conditions.
So moved.
Okay. So, the modification would be to establish a review date in July
July 8th is the next
Thank you, sir. July 8th of 2025. So, that would be modifying condition nine, granting the applicant the ability to request a sooner hearing upon 30 days' notice to the board in writing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Sir, we will see you
Yes.
Next year, but if you are able to get it together before then, we look forward to seeing you before then. Good luck.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Moving to the next matter, which is 2023-08. This is 1341 Ringe Road. This is a review of the special permit under Section 181.94 of the Fitchburg Zoning Ordinance issued after remand from the Worcester Superior Court, zoning appeal, legal action number 2385 CV 00600, by consent of all parties and by order of court to the Board of Appeals dated September 27th, 2023. Welcome back to the meeting. Could you each please state your well-known names and cities of address for the record?
Joanne Hamburg, McGoren, Lunenburg, Mass.
Okay. And you, sir?
Louis Levine, attorney for the applicant petitioner.
Welcome back to the board council.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again. So, I anticipate that we will likely have people who would like to speak on this review, but I'd like to start out, sir, if you could, with an update on where we are in construction.
Well, I'll update you. Per your last request, we've done the dust mitigation, mitigation has been maintained. We have porta potties on site which have been maintained. Installation erosion control has been installed and maintained as needed. All drainage system has been installed, and all water is diverted from the abutters' land to our detention pond. All excess material has been removed, with the exception of about 1,000 to 2,000 yards of screened loom, which will be used on site for the final three homes. One and a half of the homes is actually on site and in the process of being assembled. We've roughly graded all the roadways. The installation of all the utilities for each home site has been completed, along with the remaining concrete slabs. Two of the last three home sites, or one and a half, are on site and are currently being assembled, with the last home being delivered approximately July 20th. The final cul-de-sac and remaining roadways are paved, along with the existing home driveways. There are three driveways that still need to be paved after the final assembly of the homes. All the homes and the last three final driveways will be installed and completed by the deadline of November 20th, which was set on the plans. The special permit was recorded on 9/27/23. The conservation easement agreement was recorded on April 9th, 2024. The permit for the The permit for the recreational building has recently been approved and we have begun construction. The foundation has been excavated and the existing ledge has been exposed. Um, due to the fact that we are no longer allowed to blast or hammer. Um, I did send some pictures so you guys could get a look at it. We do obviously have more ledge. Um, we've hired ProCut Concrete Cutting and they have been out there cutting the existing ledge currently. Um, we also have Sanson Concrete Foundations who are scheduled to start the installation of the foundation on the third week of July, providing we get all the ledge removed. And our goal is to have the community building, uh, finished by the end of the year, by December 31st and ready for occupancy.
So the condition, um, of course, I'm sure you know, was to have the recreational building completed by July 1st.
Yep.
Not by December 31st.
Yep, and I explained at the last meeting, we were still waiting on our building permit. And we've recently received it.
Why December 31st?
Just need time to build it. I mean, if we can do it sooner, obviously we will. Um, and a lot's gonna depend on contractors' availability. Um, we do have pretty much everybody lined up, but everything goes with scheduling. Um, and the other thing is the company that is cutting the concrete, I mean, if you look at the pictures, they've been out there three days. Uh, we're gonna be at this for a while. I would love to have permission to bring my hammer back in and work with them to expedite removing the ledge so that we can move forward and hopefully get our foundation framed up and started for, in the next couple of weeks. But it takes time and like I said, uh, you know, without blasting or hammering, it's gonna take a while to cut that out. And you can see from the pictures, I think he's got four or five cuts. And that's just the top layer because it's gonna come down almost three feet. Just before we can put the slab in, the foundation and all the utilities.
So, um, I, when we were out there conducting an in-person visit, which I believe was in June or late May, at that point in time, they had been on site for three days cutting. Have they not been back?
June what?
Uh, when we-
We started the day before the 4th.
Okay.
They didn't start cutting. We had opened up the hole in June.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, no, in April, but we had not received our permit. So I could not leave a big exposed hole on site for someone to get hurt. So we filled it back in.
Mm-hmm.
Which unfortunately is just a safety measure.
I did see this weekend that it had been filled back in.
No, no, it's open.
I, when I was there this weekend on, so Joanne, I know what I see with my own eyes. So, uh, we might be having a difference of communication about what we're talking, but I know what I saw. Please, there was, uh, and the difference between the site visit is that during the site visit, there was a large hole open. There was a large excavation done. The ledge was there. Um, and I recall the, the cutting being done.
Mm-hmm.
Over the weekend, that was filled in. And there might have been a little dip next to the ledge, but it was filled-
The ledge has all been exposed so that he can cut it.
So.
And there's pictures there so you can see it.
Yeah, so I, I'm really-
I don't know exactly what day you were there, but he started cutting, um, July 3rd. And it was exposed July 1st or 2nd. So I don't know what day you were actually there. That's why I said, you know, last weekend would have been the 4th of July weekend, the 6th or 7th, and the hole was there. He came back on the 8th and he cut Monday. Um, he did have a generator breakdown which stalled him for two hours, but then he continued to cut. And if you look, there's only about five, six cuts. So he was there on the 3rd cutting, the 8th cutting, and today cutting. And that picture that I took for you was done this afternoon. So maybe he did get another one or two slices in. Um, but he has to take, it has to be cut. And then we have to pull it off with the excavator and then he has to cut again so that we can get down to the level. That's just the middle section. Then there's a couple other outcroppings that will also need to be brought down. Not quite as drastic, but they do need to be brought down. It's just gonna take time. Um, I was hoping it would go quicker, um, but that's where we're at.
With respect to the hammering, Madam Chairman?
I, I'm just gonna pause for a moment, um, because I, I need to clear this in my head. Mr. McLaughlin, do you recall when the site visit was? What month?
It had to have been before the-
It goes May.
People may, yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody else recall the cutting having been started at that point in time?
It hadn't been.
I didn't, I, when I was out there with you guys.
You don't recall that?
I didn't see any, I didn't see any cutting.
We had an extensive conversation about cutting.
Yeah, we did. That we did. But I didn't see any cutting being done. That was, it was all dug out.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see any lines like on, on this thing.
Yeah, did you get-
I didn't see any of that.
Was it exposed in-
I saw it dug out, but I didn't see-
Exposed, yeah.
It had exposed it.
Explaining what the process would have been, which was cut and chip.
Yeah, well, we're not chipping. We're just, well, they're gonna dig it out with the excavator, however you want to call it. But we did expose it in April. Um, we hadn't received any permits until sometime in June.
I don't, I thought-
And that's when we exposed it again.
It was just dug out.
All right.
So I just don't know what day you were there.
So moving forward, you had a question?
Well, no, just, uh, a suggestion. Uh, you know, Joanne mentioned the hammering would speed things up. And again, hammering is not permitted, but if the board would be willing, we're only looking to hammer for a week. And you can set hours on it that, and then Joanne can speak to it more directly. That's gonna speed things up considerably, correct?
It'll help, definitely. I mean, we, I don't know how long it's gonna take for him to cut it.
Can you project, uh, uh, improved completion date if they were hammering allowed?
No. It's still gonna take time. I, I-
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. I, you know, we've had enough, uh, things that we've had to do over and just unfortunately takes time.
Okay. All right, so I am going to just make sure we've covered all of the conditions.
We also put the trees in over at Doug Caves.
I, I did see that.
Yep.
Did see that.
I'll go ahead about that.
So we have the conservation easement taken care of, which is good. So going through the conditions, um, number one, no blasting, no blasting or rock crushing. No rock hammering, no screening, um, may be conducted on site after December 31st. No earth removal may be conducted on site. That's been satisfied. Applicant may construct no more than seven additional units. Satisfied. Um, hours of construction are ongoing. Uh, dust mitigation's been satisfied. No public nuisance is ongoing. Clean of construction debris and dumpsters to be emptied regularly. And I did just want to say that your construction site is nice and clean.
Thank you. I like it that way.
On-site toilets to be provided. I did see that there. Um, did you provide the notice to, uh, drivers regarding, uh, not crossing the way-
Yeah, we even put up a sign.
Okay.
It's not really big, but I thought it was gonna be bigger when I ordered it. But I did put a sign out front and we did tell all the drivers, but we haven't been, there's no, since December, we haven't had anything.
Did you give a copy of the notice to the building department?
No.
Could you do that?
Yeah.
Did you give a written notice?
No, we just told them. I can put something in writing, but, and then we put up the sign. You'll see the sign's still up there if you go out there.
Okay.
When you go to pull out, it's right in front of, across the street.
Could you submit to the building department, um,
Picture?
Something along the lines of, here's the sign and I, I directly told all drivers.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we can consider that one satisfied?
Yep.
Madam Chair? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just want to get through the conditions first. I, I just want to get through the conditions first, Mr. Commissioner. Um, drainage to be diverted from Abutters property per the plan. Um, and, uh, you did go through cons comm, DPW and DEP as required for that plan. Um, I do know that the December 31st work has already been satisfied. So that is all of condition 11. Okay. 12 and 13, we've gone through. 14 is outstanding. That's the recreation unit. Um, completion date of November 20 is still before us. Special permit has been recorded. Um, and then ongoing is maintenance of the ways. Um, maintenance of the drainage system waters and a sewer and stormwater. And the conservation easement has been conveyed and recorded. All right, so we have, other than ongoing conditions, we have two outstanding conditions, I think. Um, and the three, uh, paved driveways to pave once, um-
Once the homes are-
Mm-hmm. So, and that's the recreation unit, condition 14, and, um, completion of the project by November 20th. We also have the hold on the final two units until conditions 19, 20, and 24.
What is that?
We have a hold on the certificates of occupancy on the final two units.
That was released.
Okay.
That was released because I met all the conditions through December.
No, um, there was a modification which stated that, um, you can proceed on all but the final two.
But that was released in December.
When you had met the December conditions, um, the certificate of occupancy was, or I think the building permits were released on all of them, but the certificates of occupancy were held on the final two.
No, I don't believe that to me.
And the reason was for compliance with the conditions.
My understanding is that was removed because I had met all the conditions. As I have those homes sold.
So I'm sorry for your understanding, but that is not what happened. It's not, it's not what is in the decision, and the decision is before me. And this was the decision that was filed after, uh, in, after the January meeting.
I will take another look, but my understanding is that it was all satisfied and I could move forward with, um, erecting and moving forward with selling those buildings.
Erecting, yes. Erecting, yes.
Uh, that was not my understanding.
I would ask-
The only hold was that we-
I, I, I don't need you to understand.
Mm-hmm.
It's in the written decision. It is in the recorded meeting. You are welcome to go back and review the recorded meeting.
I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chairman?
Yes, Council.
Just some adification. Was that reduced to some kind of writing or it's just in?
It's in the written decision from the January 9th meeting.
Meeting, so-
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we all can refer to that?
It's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, um, conditions 19, 20, and 24, just to review, were the conservation easement being recorded, submitted to the building department. These are all regarding the conservation easement because we had that issue where, uh, the initial proposal didn't, um, complete and we ended up having the city hold the conservation easement.
The conservation easement, once that was recorded, released the
Mm-hmm.
Hold on those units. That was the understanding or the decision that was made. The only reason there was a hold on occupancy on those two units was until I recorded the conservation easement, which I did, once everybody agreed to. Do you have a copy of the January 9th meeting?
I'm looking at it.
It says on-
I'm looking at it. Ms. Hamburg?
Okay.
I'm looking at it and I'm reading it. Mr. Commissioner, you've had your hand up for a while. Can you go ahead?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, let me get my camera back on. So I agree with everything that was said. I just wanted to give an update that we keep still getting complaints about the stormwater out at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's quieted down recently. Just, we haven't had terrible rains, I guess. Um, other than last weekend, we had, didn't get a complaint done. I know that Ms. Hamburg has been working with the engineering department and with her engineer to address any of the issues engineering has been doing and that the abutters have been, um, noting. So she is, she is actively working with the city on trying to address those, but I wouldn't necessarily say it's closed as of yet until we get something from engineering saying it's closed.
I have reached out to engineering and invited them out multiple times. I actually spoke to Ryan and he had acknowledged that it looks like it's working fine. And my engineers have also been out there to look at it to make sure that it's working properly.
Um, so I, I realize, Mr. Commissioner, we continue to receive complaints and I do, um, look forward to DPW circling back. Um, for what I have observed, again, I was out there on Sunday, which followed to very, two days of very large rainstorms. And I did not see any, um, standing water in the area where the drainage was. So.
It's working.
That's good.
I am going to now go to public comment. Um, Counselor Fleming, I see that you have your hand up. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I'm sitting here listening to this meeting, I just, I got a gut feeling that she was gonna be asking to blast again. And I urge this council to not allow any more blasting. We promised those residents up there that it was going to end, and I hope we keep to our word. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Uh, Counselor, I'm not requesting the blast. Um, to obtain blasting, the blaster would have to obtain permits, which would take longer and-
Bottom line is we can't blast, so we're not gonna blast.
We're not looking to blast.
We're not gonna blast.
It was rock hammering that was requested.
Yeah, the only thing we-
If you, if you're okay with it.
If you're okay, if you're okay with it, no.
If not, we'll just keep-
That's it. And it was only for a limited period of time?
All right. Counselor Fleming, did you have further to say? Um, or is your hand just remaining? Okay, thank you. Um, is there any other person virtually who would like to comment on for or against the review? Please raise your hand. Ms. DeChamps, please state your name and city of residence and then go ahead and make your comment.
Kathleen DeChamps, 1307 Ringe Road, um, a direct abutter. And I do have a, I take, um, I listened to the meeting and I understand that it would help facilitate if they could do some hammering. However, when they asked if they, you would complete the date earlier than December 31st, you said no. Um, Joanne, so I'm in agreement that you should have that leeway of having hammering. Um, it's actually been anomaly, much pleasant, much more pleasant in this area without that hammering and without blasting. So that's my opinion. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Christian, please state your name and city of residence and then you're welcome to make a comment.
Hi, thank you, um, Madam Chair. It's Mary Ellen Myra Christian, 71 Bennett Road in Fitchburg. And I just wanna say what Ms. DeChamp just said. I agree that you did promise that us residents would not have to deal with any more hammering or blasting. And I have, I have to be honest, I have a little sympathy when this rec center should have been done and was on plans back in 2006 and 2010. Um, the other comment I wanted to make, please, was that our own drainage issue?
Who are you talking about?
Can't hear her.
Can't hear her.
Uh, Mary Ellen, could you speak closer to the microphone or, or something?
Yep.
All right. Uh, if I understood the essence of your comment, it was to state that, um, you were, you were not in favor of allowing the rock hammering or blasting again. Is that right?
She's mute.
Um, Mary Ellen, you're muted. Mary Ellen, you're muted again.
I'm mute. Okay.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, yes, you understood me right.
Okay.
I'm sorry that you couldn't hear me. But, you know, I just said I just have li- little sympathy when plans have a rec center back in 2006, 2010. So as far as meeting deadlines, I think we're way beyond. So I, I really hope that the board considers keeping their promise on keeping the place quiet with no more both blasting and jack hammering. And my other comment was, but I, if you don't mind if I have one more minute.
Mary Ellen, could you pause for a moment?
Yep.
We are clearly having some technical difficulties. Can Dan turn up the volume in here? It, it's been most of the people during, that have been remote during the meeting, so. Go ahead, Mary Ellen, we're going to do our best to hear you.
Okay, and I'll try to speak louder. The other comment was on our water issue. And, but I, I do believe the Billing Commissioner said that they were still watching it. So I just was hoping that it would not be signed off on yet because there, on Sunday I was also over there. I know there was some rain on Saturday. It wasn't significant. We haven't had any significant rain since that modification was done. So quite honestly, I don't think it's fair that it's looked at with the engineers until after a significant rain. But it was wet on our side on Sunday morning. So there wasn't a big pool, Madam Chair, that was there at board, but it was certainly wet. And again, as I've said before, is that area was never wet. Vegetation is, is still dead. It is upland vegetation that does not grow in any wet land. So I realize there's not a big pond there, but I have a feeling it still could be in a significant rainstorm. I'm hoping not. I'm certainly hoping this modification works. But if I could just ask the board to please consider making sure that the engineers are there after a significant rainstorm. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right. Is there any person present who would like to make a comment on this review? Right, I'm going to go around to the board. Mr. Byrne, any comments? Mr. Talbot, any comments?
How many days of hammering do you expect?
Well, we hope to get it done in less than a week, but, you know, it'll really depend how soon we can get the machine there and.
Did they give you a projection on how long the saw cutting is going to take?
He has no idea.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gallagher?
I'm all set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Two comments, Madam Chair. Number one, I believe that at the last meeting we were going to rely on site visit from Commissioner Erickson from the DPW and a, some written response from him stating that the drainage was sufficient in the design. So I'd, I'd like to see that. And obviously, the neighbors have, you know, given the thumbs up to having a quiet summer. I think we, it, you know, it's unfortunate it's going to take a little bit longer, but we just, you know, 10 years of the jack hammer, we can't, we can't go back down that rabbit hole. You know, I think we owe it to the residents. You know, that's, that's one week of their summer, that's, that's an eighth of the summer, right? So I have to be respectful to the decision.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So just to review, the condition regarding drainage was Condition 10. And I don't see any other condition relative to that issue.
Correct.
Correct? Great.
So I don't, have we received any feedback from Con, Conscom on that? Or DEP, or, I mean, it just, it looks like we were looking for, you know, feedback with regards to, you know, meeting some type of criteria from three different entities.
Okay. So that means we need some further feedback from the city on Condition 10. Whether or not it's been satisfied. On the certificate of occupancy being held on the last two units. I'm just going to make sure there is no other modification. It was for Conditions 19, 20, and 24 being satisfied. And that was all about the conservation easement being submitted, approved, and recorded. And that has been done. Does any board member have an objection to noting those three conditions satisfied? 19, 20, and 24? No objection?
No.
No, but I do want to make sure number 10 doesn't become a long, lingering issue. And in the meantime, the project is finished.
So certainly, but where we have a condition stating that the certificates of occupancy, and I hesitate between this too. We have a condition stating that certificates of occupancy will be held until those three conditions were satisfied. And I do believe they have been. At the same time, it really disheartens me to hear that the recreational unit will not be completed until December 31st. That is, you know, something that is a major component of the enjoyment of the facility by its residents that is missing. There are some outdoor components, there's an outdoor pavilion, there's a, I think it's a bocce ball court that's been installed. But as we've tried to balance the competing needs, the, the thing that concerns me is the needs of the residents, none of whom are here or have, or have come to comment, by the way. You know, kind of fall a little bit to the wayside. And it disheartens me, quite honestly, that the homes that are being built for sale are ready to complete, but the recreational building is not. It, it's, it's disheartening.
I do everything I can.
And I understand there's a kind of a, you know, the other, the other seven units have a profit result from completion and the recreational building does not. So.
Can we, we can modify and add conditions that are reasonable to the project, so.
I, I. I'm not willing to hold the additional occupancy permits because I think that we set forth a clear boundary and it was met. At the same time, we set forth a clear time limit on the recreation building and it was not met.
I will do everything I can to hit the November 20th, but I, I don't want to set unrealistic expectations. I'm doing everything I can. I think you'll see that we've come a long way. My guys will work in their butt off out there. And, you know, we've brought in a lot of extra help to try to meet the deadlines, but it takes time. This is a big building we're putting up. It's 30 by 70. It's not a 24 by 48 manufactured home that I can put together in two weeks. And we want to do it right. I just, you know, if I can make, I'll come back in November and give you an update. I don't have any issue with coming back and showing you where we're at, inviting you up to see where we're at. We do have everything tentatively lined up because as you know, in construction, not everything goes as planned. We have to fight with Mother Nature and, you know, inspections and there's just a lot involved. So, you know, I am doing everything you've asked me to do. I'm trying very hard and I just hope that you'll work with me. I'm not going anywhere and we are going to finish the building. I'm just trying to be realistic in the timeframe because I don't want to disappoint anybody. We're doing the best I can.
Right, Mr. Commissioner, I saw your hand up at one point. Did you want to speak again?
I just wanted to address Mr. McLaughlin's comment about the Engineering Department. I actually went out there with Nick Erickson and Ryan Colleen and Herlyn, the Conservation Agent, a few months ago and to look at it. Herlyn agreed that it technically is outside the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, that area. So it really was left to the Engineering Department. They came up with a plan with the, with the engineer. The issue is that it didn't work as well. The riprap wasn't as, as effective as, at diverting as possible, as, as anticipated. But they've made multiple modifications since then. So, and I, and I just wanted to say that they are working with the Engineering Department. I haven't heard anything recently from them. But Commissioner Erickson did go out there with me and with Ryan Colleen and Herlyn.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Is there any further discussion on this review? Is there any suggestion about a resolution regarding the recreational building timeline?
Other than a reasonable condition to, you know, a new added condition with regards to, you know, making sure that it gets completed before everything is released.
All right. So. I'm inclined to, and let me just finish this before it happens. I'm inclined to entertain a motion noting that Conditions 19, 20, and 24 have been satisfied and that the certificates of occupancy have been released. I'm not inclined to extend the deadline on completion of the recreational building. I'm not in charge of the consequence of that, but I am not inclined to consent to a December 31st deadline. That's a long time.
Madam Chairman, if I can suggest that perhaps if you consider reviewing the status of a clubhouse in two or three months, rather than the end of the project in November, September, October date. So the onus would be on my client and do as much as she can. And obviously, if you see progress, you know, you'll be happy. And if you see no progress, you'll be grumpy. You know, and that's it. I mean, assuming we don't have a, you know, COVID again or something like that, then, you know, the onus is on us to get it done.
So I think the summation of that suggestion was a September review date. What's the September date? September the 14th?
10.
10, thank you.
What day is it? I'm sorry.
September the 10th, second Tuesday. Thank you. I would still rather see them in September. So just as a warning, we have a long agenda for September.
So, Madam Chair, may I speak?
Please do.
The recreation building was supposed to be done for 4th of July, right?
It was.
And all the homes will be in and completed by when?
Well, I, hopefully before November 20th, I hope by the end of October, I mean, if not sooner.
Okay. I guess I'm just a little concerned that a lot of the focus is, is on getting those done, but we're kicking this can down the road. And back in April and May, when we visited the site, everything was dug out and ready to be cut.
Yep, I didn't have a permit. And I made appointment to meet with Felix to go over the plan so that we could say, you know, do you have any questions? And, you know, he's really busy, so we did finally get our approval sometime in June. I mean, it just took time and that's the only reason we filled the hole back in because the residents want to use the outdoor recreation area. Even though we had it fenced off, I just didn't feel comfortable with a big hole in the middle of the community. So we had filled it back in, put the fence up, and then we redug it, which, you know, was just extra work, but it was more of a safety measure.
I think the Commissioner has a question or a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner. And let me ask you, was there not an excavation permit that would have been required? Was that granted?
So that would come from the Engineering Department, but no, there is not. But I can tell you that before they applied for their permit, I did meet with, with Ms. McGurn, Ms. Hamburg and her husband for quite a while to discuss the project. And then they submitted the plans. It took me just under a month to review the plans for the project and there were a number of issues with it. I had not received any requests to meet, to go over the project beyond that meeting that I met with, with Ms. Hamburg and her husband. So I take a little umbrage to the fact that, that she says that I'm too busy to meet with her with that. I did take about a month to review the, the plans because there were a bunch of issues with it. They responded back about 15 days later. I responded back to them less than a week after that. And we went back and forth a number of times with, with issues and questions with the plans. They applied on April 1st and the permit was issued in mid-June. So it really was actually fairly expedited process for getting this, getting this permit issued. So there was no, no attempts to call me to, and Ms. Ms. Hamburg and I spoke multiple times because she'll call me five to 10 times about a certificate of occupancy for a project while we're waiting for sign-offs from other people. She knows how to reach me. And I've met with her a number of times.
I, I think that came out wrong. I'm sorry, I didn't mean it that way. But what I'm saying is he's really busy and he did a great job and got us all the pay, you know, everything he needed. I think it just came out wrong. I didn't mean that he's too busy, but he's got a lot going on. And he would get back to us, our engineer and architect would get back to him, and it just took time. And it took time to draw the plans. Nothing on, you know, Felix, because he's been awesome. I mean, with returning my emails and phone calls and helping me get everything taken care of. So I'm sorry if that came out. I didn't mean that in the wrong way, Felix. I just know you have, he has a lot going on, a lot to cover for Fitchburg.
All right. I'd like to bring the review to a close. And I'd like to bring this review hearing to a close. So I think, again, the business that we can resolve today is 19, 20, and 24 being satisfied and the certificates of occupancy being released as stated in the condition. I'm going to note that Condition 10 is not yet satisfied, noting that the petition, the permit holder has made efforts to satisfy. Condition 14 has not been satisfied. I am not inclined to modify the decision to allow for rock hammering. Is any other board member so inclined or wish to discuss the issue?
We withdraw the request. Sorry, I don't take your time.
I am not inclined to modify the deadlines. I'm looking for the September 10th review date. Would I have a motion on that basis or any other basis? date. Would I have a motion on that basis or any other basis a board member would like to introduce? Finding that conditions 19, 20, and 24 have been satisfied, releasing those certificates of occupancy as stated in condition 25, and noting that conditions 10 and 14 have not been satisfied, and setting a review hearing for September 10.
I'd like to add in a condition that occupancy for two units be withheld until 10 and 14 is satisfied.
So moved.
Let's have some discussion on that motion.
You want to?
I would like to have some discussion on that motion. Okay, so let's talk particularly about the modification of the condition, which is the only thing I think we need to discuss. I heartily agree with your sentiments and have concern about the satisfaction of condition 14 in timely manner. But we had already stated the resolution required for certificates of occupancy.
Sure, and I'll vote in favor of that.
Yeah. Those were the last two.
I'm asking, I'm making a recommendation to the board to add a new condition to the special permit.
It's the same two certificates of occupancy, though.
It could be two different buildings.
Okay. Hardly agreeing with your sentiment, I would disagree because of the inconsistency. Any other board member wish to make a comment? What's that?
Then maybe three.
There were seven units. The certificates of occupancy have issued already for five. There are two remaining. They are the only two remaining.
I'm only recommending a reasonable condition to make sure the project gets completed not too long after it was supposed to originally be completed. So maybe one unit.
Okay. So would you consent to that modification of the motion?
But of course.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that portion of the motion? I am appreciative, but still not in favor for the reasons said. Let's take a vote.
That's fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as stated continuing the review, say aye.
Continuing the review simply until?
At, as?
In September.
In September?
Yes.
So let's take this piece by piece. All those in favor of continuing the review to September 10th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor of finding that conditions 19, 20, and 24 have been satisfied, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
We have written documentation on those conditions.
Yes.
Probably doesn't need a vote, but take one.
And then the proposal would be to modify condition 25, or no, to add condition?
Add a new condition.
Add condition 27, that the certificate of occupancy on one unit shall be withheld until conditions 10 and 14 have been satisfied. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, so that passes. We have a modified condition. One certificate shall issue, one shall be held until completions of conditions 10 and 14.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
And I'm not asking for a straw poll. When we come in on the 10th, we would ask reconsideration of that. But again, I'm not presenting any evidence. I'm not asking you to tell me yea or nay. We'll show up and we'll have the facts on September 10th.
Okay.
And potentially alternatives.
I think, just remind you to review what needs to happen for a motion for reconsideration, which I think the reconsideration has to be taken from somebody who's in the affirmative on the motion.
But I guess my question would, my issue would be to, just the way you added the condition, to modify it. If you can call a reconsideration, I call a modification.
Thank you for the heads up. And if you have a proposal to submit ahead of time, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. We're continued till September 10.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, we are back after recess to the July 9, 2024 meeting of the ZBA. Calling the next matter on the agenda, it is ZBA 23-40. This is 180 Main Street. This is a review of the special permit under section 181.313D12 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to occupy and operate an exhaust and auto repair shop pursuant to section 181.94 in the downtown business district. All right, so I don't see our permit holder here today.
Oh, Madam Chair, the applicant is on vacation.
Okay.
Contacted me and asked for a continuance.
All right. Is anybody disinclined towards a continuance?
No.
It's going to need to be, I believe, to October. We're going to have a heavy agenda in September. I'm going to engage in a brief discussion on this item, if I can find my notes on it. I did take a look at the existing parking striping on this case. I think it needs some modification. I think there are places where the exit needs to be marked as a no-left turn on one side of the property. I think the striped parking was put into place when there was not a second exit closer to the train station. It does seem like there's not an adequate path to turn. There's not an adequate radius. I do, however, think that despite that, the majority of the parking is sufficient to satisfy the required parking for the use, particularly given that there are bays on the inside. So when the applicant next appears before us, I am going to be suggesting some additional modifications to the parking to ensure that it complies with the new traffic flow that has been created downtown.
Madam Chair, can we do that without him here and forward him our filings? And so the next time when he comes in, it's already done?
I would be hesitant to do so.
Okay.
I would be hesitant to do so.
Good enough. You the boss.
All right.
It'd be good to have some dialogue with the applicant.
Yes.
And some of the other things that would probably go along with it. It's a one-way when you pull out. So if we're requesting some type of signage, is that something that the city's required to put in? I don't know whether, when that, if that curb cut was triggered by the previous owner, or if the city put that in as part of the new design plan. So there's a lot of questions that probably need to be discussed, so.
I think in inquiry with DPW or the police traffic section as to what the determination was when the modifications to that part of Boulder Drive were done, I think that would inform our requests and also what the permit holder would need to do. Can I have a motion to continue the review hearing to October 8, 2024?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Matter is continued. The next case on our agenda is ZBA 2022-13. This is 76 Pritchard Street. This is the review of a special permit under Section 181.336 to reinstate a vacant urban building and convert the use from one non-conforming use to another less detrimental non-conforming use as a two-family. Welcome, sir. Please state your name and city.
My name is Adam Pishdarian, 76 Pritchard Street, Pittsburgh.
So, Mr. Pishdarian, you are here for review and I think probably from separate visits of the zoning board members, we can see that you've not satisfied the conditions yet and need more time to complete the project. And I think we will be discussing, discussing what a continuance would look like tonight. But we did receive a comment from a city department, and this is a serious issue. The Pittsburgh Police Department reported that there is a neighbor who's reported that you have been appropriating their electricity without consent.
No, that's not true.
And I know that you do not have, sir?
I'm sorry.
I know that you do not have the utilities turned on in the building. And this is a matter for the police to resolve, not us. But it is a serious charge. There is a lot of danger that can happen when electricity is extended from a place that it's not meant to be extended from. And so I am going to encourage you to resolve this quickly and appropriately. If you are not using the neighbor's electricity, you can have the police department or the utility company come and look at that. If you are, please stop. That's it. That's, that's it. That's all I'm going to say.
Was, was the matter was done that day?
Sir! That's all I'm going to say on the matter. Does, I'm going to, is any other person present wish to make a comment on this case? Does any board member wish to ask a question or make a comment on this case?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallagher.
I noticed today you had an excavation crew out there working on the front yard. Could you kind of explain to the board what's going on with that?
It wasn't my house. It was a next door.
Oh, it was next door?
Yeah.
I apologize. I thought it was that house.
And the matter of the electricity, the lady had a problem with the tenant because the first month the tenant didn't pay.
Mr. Pishdarian, I raise, I raise the issue because there is a comment from the police department. This board does not resolve those issues and thus I do not wish to have you present a defense or discussion of the issue.
I'll say, thank you.
Okay. Does any other board member wish to make a comment or ask a question of the permit holder? My only question is, you know, we're looking for the project to be completed and I know that you have an issue with going back and forth to visit your family. That takes you away for some time. If we schedule you for the October meeting, will you be able to attend? And do you believe the project will be completed?
Well, project matter of being completed, I already got the final, I mean, inspection on the electricity coming to my house. The inspector inspected and waiting for the unit out to come and connect it. After that, his final inspection is just the first floor going to be outlet. They put, putting the outlet, they did half of it. Second floor is already done. And except two lights was missing, I bought it. He's going to come and put it anyway when he's doing downstairs. And then my, then the plumbing is, he just disappeared for two weeks now. He, he sent me a text and he said, I'll be there Friday. And that's matter of couple of hours with him. And then the house itself, I, everything else, I'm doing it and it's almost done. I'm just waiting for these two guys. I'm depending on them. The plumber came two weeks ago and he got $1,000 again. And he said, I'll be back tomorrow. He didn't show up. It's only matter of couple of hours job. And I don't know why they're doing that to me. They make me cry, but I have no, nothing to, I can't do nothing about it. And then as soon as they get it done, the house, I need the MICO, the Certificate of Occupancy, because I want to get it done before I go. And then as what we discussed, I was going to go back and come back again. And you told me as soon as, if I get it done in matter of a week or two, somebody from, from here, they got it, maybe if they're close enough, they come and look at the house and then they approve it and so be all well. I'm all set.
No, I, I said that we could go, if you notify us before the next meeting, you know, we could go take a look within a week or two and then we'd be ready at the next meeting to discuss.
I won't be here.
Completion of the, completion of the conditions.
I won't be here in, in September. I'm going to leave. I, I can't wait anymore. I mean, my kid is crying, my wife and me. We are separated. It's very hard for me. I'm working, I mean, if I could work 24 hours, I sure God I would do and get it done. I'm working so hard to get it done and get out of here. And because I have to rent one of the, I can't leave it empty anymore because I'm afraid they come and they steal something and they, then I go back again. Everything going to start. So I just need one, I'm going to finish it, the second floor, and get the CO, Certificate of Occupancy, and then, then I go. And if it's before that September, hopefully you told, you told me that you can come and check it. Somebody come and check it.
Sure. We were discussing your appearing at the next meeting remotely and the fact that you would have to leave before the next meeting. And I said, if you're done, let us know so that we can come see before you leave.
Yes.
Right. That's what I said. Okay? That doesn't mean that, you know, we can move up the meeting. And you are welcome to appear remotely at the meeting. So appear on Zoom if you can't be here in person.
On what?
Zoom.
Zoom?
Zoom.
Oh, Zoom.
Zoom.
Excuse me?
Do you do Zoom meetings? Are you familiar with that?
No.
Okay, so that may not be a possibility.
We have a call-in number, right? So you can, you can call in to the phone number.
Yeah.
And talk at the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So again, you're welcome to let the building department know when you believe you're complete.
Okay.
And one of the board members will try to get over there. Take a look.
I appreciate it.
But I think we're going to schedule you for the October meeting. So that means when you call in, it's going to be for the October meeting.
Okay.
So the October meeting is October 8, 2024. Mr. Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I did look and there are notes from June from Inspector Mark Sullivan that he's ready for final inspections. Inspector Sullivan is just waiting on final electrical and plumbing to be signed off before he can sign off on, on the building side. Mr. Pishdarian has applied for his Certificate of Occupancy and we're waiting on the, on the sign-offs from, from plumbing, electric and all the other departments. Just, just so that the board knows that he is, he is making progress and is in communication with Inspector Sullivan.
Right. And just as a reminder to the building department, the board is holding the Certificate of Occupancy on the case.
Thank you. And as the chair may notice, I've been adding, I've been adding zoning sign-offs to certificates of occupancy and assigning it to the chair so that these things don't slip through the cracks like they have previously.
I have noticed that and I appreciate the improvement in the system. So, all right. Can I have a motion on the, to continue this matter until October 8, 2024?
So moved.
Before the motion, ma'am?
Go ahead. We don't have a second yet.
Condition, okay. Condition number six. Existing walkway from Pleasant Street to the third floor of the structure to be removed. Or if required by the fire department, replace it in accordance with all safety and code requirements. Did we get a determination from the fire department that that was to, needed to be there?
Yes.
We have a written document from the fire department?
It was a long time ago, but yes. So that was when this, when this matter was new before us. Because I remember the review was conducted by the new fire marshal and the old fire marshal together.
Thank you. My second question is, and I, this would be for Commissioner Samo, is was the, we're going to call it a bridge from the, what street is that behind?
Pleasant.
From Pleasant Street to the third floor rear of the house. Was that built in accordance to code and inspected?
It was inspected.
Let me just check our record really quickly. One of the things we've been doing is our inspectors have been taking photos much more during the inspections. So on June 27, or June 25, he wrote, "The rear catwalk, new LVLs, existing midspan footings, railings are strong."
I'm sorry?
Inspector Sullivan wrote on June 25, "Rear catwalk, new LVLs, existing midspan footings, railings are strong." And he has photographs of that catwalk that you're talking about, calling a bridge. He has multiple photographs uploaded into our system. So he did look at it. He has photos from up top as well as below.
Do you have photos?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
That, I'm not an inspector, but that quality meets code?
Code says in a workperson-like manner. And Inspector Sullivan made the determination that this did meet code. I am looking at it a bit in the sense of LVLs on the exterior and I don't know of any LVLs that are approved for the exterior. So I can look into that when I'm back next week. Just, just, and I can check in with Inspector Sullivan tonight. I'll send him a message. But I am noting that he did do an inspection on this. So I will check. Typically, this kind of thing looks like it should have been engineered. But again, I will check with Inspector Sullivan.
Mr. Commissioner, just to add to that, I believe that Mr. Bovee from the fire department had a request in to be present at the next inspection and I think it would.
He's not from the fire department. He's from the assessing department. Mr. Bovee is from the assessing department. What we're trying to do is have the assessors come out before we issue occupancy and really trying to get everyone, get much better communication between everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. My second concern is, again, completion of projects that just, as the board has seen, go on for years. And how do we get them to a completion state? And one of the conditions is that, is number five, the dormer in right-hand stairwell will be removed within three months after the occupancy is issued. So if the occupancy is issued and then the applicant is gone for six months, we've missed another deadline. And then, does the board have provisions in place for ensuring that the conditions are met?
I am looking to bring up the most recent decision.
Already removed the stairs. It was supposed to be removed. I did it already.
Do you, do you have a copy of the conditions?
The condition right now?
No, the conditions that the board.
Yeah, I read it. I read it the other day. It says, remove the stairs on the side of the house.
Yeah, and the dormer up top.
It doesn't say on the dormer on top, but I, anyway, I showed them myself what I'm going to remove, that, the part of it in the front of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it does say the dormer?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you're not sure, we should probably have some board members meet with you to, or when you, with the inspector, have this and you could review the list of conditions with the.
I have it, I have it. I think then what part's supposed to be removed. And I have no problem removing that.
Okay.
If I get my occupancy done in matter of a week, actually, I'm going to stay here and do that because that's not a big deal. Especially now it's the summer. I've got to do it now because when it winter comes, the cold or rain comes, it's hard. But I can get it done in matter of a week after it, you know? But I put it three months because I want just, you know, to be safe. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So a suggestion would be that the certificate of occupancy would not, for the second unit, would not issue until those are removed?
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That wasn't the condition on the beginning though. If I, if I get my, I mean, I don't know when, but hopefully soon. But if happening matter of a month, two months, three months, my, my, my kids, my family come, I need a place to live. This is, that's what I'm doing. I'm getting this place to get, to live there.
She was referencing the second one.
Well, the first one, I'm going to rent it because I'm, I mean, I have no job anymore. I have, my money is finished, so I need some income. That's what I'm going to, second floor, I'm going to rent it. And the first floor, I'm going to leave. So I'm going to leave in there and I need it. I definitely get that done. I mean, if I'm, if I'm here, I have no problem. You can put any, anything, you can tell me. Well, you have to do this in matter of a week or so. I have no problem. I'll take care of it. But if I'm, my, my, my family is there and I have to go there.
So the issue with doing that, sir?
I'm not going to be here, so.
Sir!
Yes, yes, ma'am.
When the board speaks, you do not. The issue with doing that is that we have asked you to do things within timelines that you have said you have, can accomplish multiple times and you have failed to do so within the time that you stated it could be done. So this board, which again, has a lot of sympathy for your separation from your family. We are looking at the second year of this project not being done and, and you needing to return for your family. We are looking for a way to make sure that the work gets done. Not, not, not when it's convenient for you, within the timeline that we've set. And I think the condition. requiring the second certificate of occupancy not to be issued until you've done that removal is what is needed at that at this point to ensure that you do complete it. Because you've had a lot of circumstances interrupting you. And I'm sure that circumstances will present themselves again that you will deem more important. So with that, I'd
And you know.
For I'd look for a motion to continue the review until October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Modifying condition. Five. To to add at the end to state, the dormer and right-hand stairwell are to be removed within three months after the certificate of occupancy issues for the first unit, period. The certificate of occupancy for the second unit shall not issue until this condition is completed and released by the board. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Good luck on completion of the project. When you are ready for a board member to come take a view, let Ms. Mada know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you know, it's not my fault, it's plumber and electrician.
Whether or not it's your fault, it just needs to get done, sir.
All right.
I'm calling the next matter, that is ZBA two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-three. One oh nine Oak Hill Road, review of a special permit to operate a restaurant under section one eighty-one point three one three of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance located in the residential C District. Mr. Cordio, good evening. If you could please repeat for the board your name and city of residence.
Yeah, Christopher Cordio, Pittsburgh, Mass.
And can you give us an update, please, on what's been going on with the property?
So I was attempting to do it all out of pocket, but I've realized it's just not possible, so I've obtained the paperwork to get a construction loan to try and get this thing moving a little bit faster. Obviously, this is my busy season doing construction and flipping houses, so. As to my parking lot over there, I'm sure most of you have driven by and seen all the fireworks on it. This is the fourth time. So the first, I went and cleaned it, the third, I went and cleaned it, the fifth, I went and cleaned it, and now this is the fourth time, so. With that being said, I can only do so much over there because, I mean, they're just letting off fireworks like it's their private backyard, so. We're gonna clean it tomorrow. Our goal was to get to it today, but obviously, we're out of town today working, so we'll get that cleaned up. My trailer that's sitting there has a broken axle, that's why it's still sitting there if anyone's wondering, so I had to order. I had to order from Max D, which is a company out of Texas, so that will be coming in soon and that will be moved. The lift is there for to do the siding, siding's onsite in the building, so we'll be siding shortly here. Other than that, I got the plans for the flower planter boxes that Mr. McLaughlin requested from Mr. Lorgan. And I think that's where we're at right now, so once if we do get that loan, we will be moving forward rather quickly. If not, I did get approached by a local church that wants to purchase the building, so. Hopefully, I don't have to go that route, but if the if the loan doesn't come through, it would just take me too long to do it personally, so I don't want to go that route. But, you know, it's a great building, great location for for something. They don't want to see it sit vacant for too too long, so. That's where we stand at the moment.
So this permit was granted on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Correct, for zoning, yes.
Yes.
I think I received my building permit maybe July
Yep.
of two thousand and twenty-three. I had to get some more paperwork for the zoning board when, I mean, for the building department before that permit was, that's why there's such a delay there between start time or accepted of this through zoning and a building permit, so I needed some more stuff from Mr. Sullivan, which I did get him, that's why the permit was six months or seven months after the the acceptance from zoning.
So we were to have an onsite visit in June with you to review the paving and landscaping plan and any vegetative screening, which did not occur.
Correct, so the one commodity we have is time, so. With time, I'm not gonna waste your time and have you guys come up and look at something that there's nothing to look at, so. With that being said, I'm I'm working on that to get you guys up there to look at, but to have you just walk and look at what you can see driving in a parking lot is just a waste of time. We're all busy people. It wasn't as a snub to the board, it was more of a, you know, time sometimes gets away from us, so. In my case, I happened to be away for vacation for two weeks in June, so I was away. Getting back here, my wife's pregnant too, so we are back and forth with doctor's appointments, so it's been kind of a struggle, but you know, whenever you guys would like to come up, when we're getting a little bit closer, that's what I would recommend, in my opinion. So you're not just looking at a parking lot that's sitting there like that. We do maintain it, we clean it, make sure it's okay, other than what you saw this weekend, but that will be all taken care of tomorrow.
Have you been before the license commission or?
No, I spoke with City Hall two months ago, there's still plenty of license boards, because there's no sense in having that, they need a they need a wall to put it on, so. Not gonna approve it till we're getting closer.
Inside what needs to be done?
We gotta build up the handicap bathrooms, and I am, my first quote for sprinklers was fifty-one thousand, so. Which is just an astronomical number for everything that's wide open, so I'm waiting on two more quotes. Hopefully, they come in a little bit cheaper, that's the, I mean, fifty-one grand for sprinklers is a lot of money when you're not having to go into ceilings and stuff, everything's wide open, since we have everything upstairs, the trusses are exposed. Downstairs, the joists are all exposed, so they can run the sprinklers right away, then we can fill in everything after the fact. So, and that's another reason for the loan, I mean, if that is the number we have to go with, fifty-one thousand is a large number to to put up out of pocket, so.
Well, and then the rest of the construction.
And then the rest of the construction too.
But I mean, I I would estimate you've probably got two or three hundred thousand in other construction costs.
The roof alone was thirty grand and we did it ourselves, I mean, it was a forty-six square roof, so that was a big one, had to replace plywood, so. Siding is all there, siding was twelve grand just for materials. Now we have the the labor side of it, I mean, luckily, we saved some on the labor side because we do it. So but it's still money that has to go out one way or another.
So I'm gonna remind you, because you've mentioned a possible sale, that we do have a sunset clause.
Correct, I know that.
Permit.
Yep.
But a church may not be concerned about that.
Correct.
Construction was to be completed by August third of this year, clearly, that's not gonna happen.
Yep.
So I I'm kind of at the point, because I I like the project and I like the fact that the building would be renovated and put into use again.
Yep.
But I don't believe you're able to move forward, and there are many reasons why that can happen. But I don't think you're able or or ready to move, I'll say, ready to move forward with the plan.
Okay.
Ready to move forward with the renovation of the building and sometimes, and, you know, certainly, I know this within my office, I take on maybe more projects than my plate is large enough to.
We all do.
Hold, yes. I am not opposed to your holding the special permit or proceeding with the project, but I am opposed to it just kind of being out there forever unresolved.
Yep.
So I I would like to discuss at this point whether you do want to continue to hold the special permit or whether you would want to come back at a later time when you're ready to proceed with the project.
I would like to hold it at least for a little while longer to see if we get do get this commercial construction loan. If that's the case, then we will be moving forward rather quickly, so if that does go through, we'll be good to go.
So can you define for me what the time to resolution on the loan process is?
Probably no, by the time they have all their paperwork, probably mid-October, everything will be ready to go.
And can you tell me what that means if you have the funds from the construction loan as far as completion of the project?
Eight months start to finish, once we have that money. It's a little easier when you can have all the ants in there working.
No, it's just I I recalled that at the first meeting.
Yeah, we're a little overzealous, but, you know, you weren't here for the last meeting, I was here at, you know, my business is flipping houses, so. From October of two thousand and twenty-two until February of two thousand and twenty-three, obviously, we got hit with a nine percent interest rate, I mean, anyone who works in the housing industry knows this. I had five houses on the market ready to go, so I ate sixty-eight thousand dollars just in interest because you end up holding these houses for so long when you're doing it, because everything's rolling along, and then the Fed jacks up the interest rate, and here we are. You know, people that can afford a five hundred thousand dollar house can now only afford a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar house, so. It changed the whole dynamic of the of the of the market, so we got hit with that a little bit. If that didn't happen, we'd probably be in a lot better shape right now, so. Not an excuse, but, you know, things happen, you know, this business is a very fluid business, so. You know, you've got all your ducks in a row, ready to go, and then someone comes and knocks them all down, you gotta line them back up and go again, so.
All right, I'm gonna take a moment and see if anyone online, I don't think anyone online has their hand up for comment. I don't see the building commissioner with his hand up for comment. I'm gonna go to the board to see if there are any questions. Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Byrne? Mister Mister Talbot, Mister Gallagher?
No.
Mister McLaughlin?
Just a comment. We all know the business here.
Yep.
It would be great if you didn't use the parking lot as a contractor's yard.
So I use it, I park cars there all the time for the reason that I want people to think we're there working all the time, because again, the neighborhood we're in is not the greatest neighborhood. It's one of those things where when they see no cars, it's almost like a free-for-all, we've been lucky enough, we haven't been broken into, all our pipes are still there, so. In a in a way, it's used as a as a way to kind of, if they see stuff moving in and out, people think people are in there working, that's the only reason why I do it because the neighborhood is 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 up and coming, but it's not up yet. So, and that's where, that's why we do it.
Again, my comment is it's you know, being used as a contractor's yard.
Okay.
Do you have a contractor's yard for all your equipment?
No, my stuff's all over the place, so we have from different buildings, different places, we have, you know, we're we got eight projects going on right now, so. We got different stuff all over the place, so whether it be a trailer or or a truck or a two two-trailer, we our stuff, again, is it moves a lot. So that's just the way we do, we run our, I mean, it's you can't find a contractor's yard these days anyways, I mean, they they're virtually they don't exist unless you find a special piece of property that's hence in an industrial area, there that you can't get them anymore, so.
Just so permit holders knows, there is a contractor's yard that has been built as a as rental space in Gardner.
Really?
Yes.
Do you happen to know the name of it?
It is under with the Slocums.
Oh, Slocum, the one over there by the, he's over by the courthouse?
Over by one forty.
One forty? Oh, perfect.
And so there are metal buildings there, but it's been specifically granted permission to be used for rental space for contractors who need a contractor's yard.
Oh, perfect.
For storage of equipment.
Yep, I tried grabbing one of the ones from the Martinez when they did on Airport Road, but those filled up fast with those big bays, so you if you're not on them quick, you can't, you're not getting a hold of one of them, so.
But I I think Mr. McLaughlin is indicating that you don't have a permit to
Okay.
Have a contractor's yard at one oh nine Oak Hill Road.
Okay.
Should not be using it as such. Did you have any other comment?
Just that realistically, Chris, we're looking at another year, right?
Yeah.
You got permitting.
Yep, roughly a year, yeah, almost exactly a year.
It's gonna be next summer?
Yep.
But you'll have a good indication.
By October. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else you wanted to say before we move to board discussion?
No, that's that's everything for me.
So I'd like to entertain some discussion on this. I I am close to looking at pulling the permit because it's been so long. But I want this, you know, if it can be successful, to be successful. I don't want it to continue to be used as a contractor's yard. October is not that long to wait for resolution on the financing, but I'd be inclined to pull the permit if it were not moving forward at that point. Does anyone else have any comment on this?
I go along with that, leave it till, because it'll be much harder for him to get money if he doesn't have that permit, so.
The special permit.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Any other comment on that?
Makes sense, I mean, in October, we're gonna know one way or the other. In the meantime, it may be solved.
Yeah, correct.
So I just want to be clear with you about where my thinking lies, and if if that were the case and you were to reapproach us at a later date when you did have the structure and financing
Yep.
Ready to move forward with the project, wouldn't be opposed to it. I I just, I I don't like having the special permit kind of hanging out there unresolved.
Yep.
So.
Optimistic.
If Mr. McLaughlin is most optimistic, we all should be. Can I have a motion, please, for a continuance of the review until October eighth?
So moved.
Motion until October.
All right, I will take that as a motion to it, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? We'll see you in October, good luck with your.
Date in October.
October eighth.
October eighth?
Oh. Something you can say with us?
Yep, I'm gonna give these to you guys.
Something to digest for October, or do we want to just see it in October?
I'm gonna drop it off to Mercedes so she can give it to you guys tomorrow?
Yeah.
That would be great.
Okay. Not a problem. Thank you.
That's the landscape?
This is the landscape, with he added the some trees to the side of the building, and he also added the flower boxes, the planter boxes that you requested, so he put them where they wouldn't get hit with traffic leaving, so he systematically placed them.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, guys. Have a great night, you. Thank you.
Calling the next matter, ZBA two thousand and twenty-three dash ten, Twenty-One Union Street. Review of the special permit under section one eighty-one point nine four, the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to reinstate and change the use of a vacant or abandoned building from a church to a single-family dwelling pursuant to section one eighty-one point three three three. All right. Welcome to the meeting, gentlemen, if you could each please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Calvin Sangster, I'm here on behalf of Twenty-One Union Street.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Edwin Belize, and I come from Twenty-One Union Street.
Okay, thank you. So the original permit holder, I think, was Louis Colton, as I remember, he was the professional applicant from the prior owner. So we reviewed this matter at the last hearing. And we were reviewing compliance with the conditions on the special permit, and if you'll give me just a moment, I'm gonna bring the document up. So I'm going to go through the conditions. But just so you know, there was a particular complaint about debris being left under the front porch underneath the lattice work, I believe. It was Mr. McLaughlin, yeah, yeah. Has that been removed?
Yes.
So here are the conditions. Not to be used as student housing or lodging house, that is an ongoing condition. Either the roof shall be removed altogether and asphalt shingles installed, or a slate the slate roof to be repaired, and I believe you have a new asphalt roof on the property. A new vinyl siding to be installed over the existing siding.
Yes.
Any windows which are not new, because we had a question about whether windows needed to be replaced, so any windows which were not new shall be replaced, as well as new exterior doors.
Correct.
Were the exterior doors replaced?
Yes, every everything is pretty much brand new.
Any windows which, oh, sorry, repeating myself, the dwelling shall contain no more than two and a half baths?
Mm-hmm, two and a half baths.
Off-street parking to be provided by leasing two parking spaces at the train station garage or other private off-street parking. And I do know that you had taken down that portion of the building and provided two off-street parking spaces, which I know the board was very happy to see.
Thank you.
No occupancy permit to be issued until all conditions have been met. The special permit to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and I believe that was satisfied. Certified parking plan to be submitted to the building department depicting dimensionally compliant spaces.
Yeah, we did that, I believe, back in March. Yeah, we did that, I believe, back in March.
Okay. Project to be completed in substantial conformance with the plan. And then a 24-month limit on completion. So there were a few issues, like the building materials that were left under the front porch with kind of quality of workmanship around the site. And I'm glad to hear that you had modified that provision. Kind of, there were there were a number of aspects, like the new roof and the and the parking that were really nice, and I was glad to see them. There was, however, some debris in the back and kind of some foam stuffed into one of the windows. And, you know, just a few details that I think could have improved the the result on the property. I understand that you had the property up for sale?
Yes, we do. It's actually, we're actually closing, we're due to close on on Thursday. Very nice couple, purchasing a house, three children. So they obviously won't be renting out to college students, which is what you all were looking for. So right now, we're just trying to get the certificate of occupancy. We did, we had every other, every other, the electrical got signed off on plumbing, building, and we got our smoke our smoke cert already. So this is actually the last step.
Okay. I'm going to see if anybody has any questions or comments. First checking online. I don't see that we have anybody with their hand raised. Is there anybody else here as a member of the public who would like to make a comment? All right, I'm going to go to the board. Mr. Reynolds? Good? Mr. Byrne?
May I ask, what was the asking price of the house?
$480,000.
Say that again?
$480,000.
Four, eight, zero?
Yes, correct. It's a very large, single-family house.
You have a buyer?
Huh?
And you have a buyer?
We do, yep.
God bless you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Talbot?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Nice job in general. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. McLaughlin?
General, good job, appreciate it. Do you have any other projects in Pittsburgh?
We do. I'm actually, he did some of the the work on there. We own 21 Union together, but I own 48 Garnett Street also with 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 my wife and someone else, which is also on the market right now.
The Blue House?
Yeah, the Blue House.
We drove by it last night.
Really?
You see the inside. We we worked really hard on both these projects, so.
Which one was? I missed that. Where did where is it?
Garnett Street. We were talking to that gentleman last night.
That Blue House?
Yes, yes.
How much you asking for that one?
We we put that one on the market for $495.
$495?
Mm-hmm.
The fellow that was walking by that when we we passed commented on the construction. He said it was very, very well done.
Uh, yeah, a lot of.
I liked the idea of the way you brought the building up from the the foundation up to the top.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You did a nice job. I have to say that, too. My wife had commented on it when she passed it also.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's I'm really glad to hear that.
Now, you said you got that you got all that crap out from underneath that porch, right?
We did.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, it actually came up on the on the home inspection, so we we had to. So, yeah, so we had to take we had to take care of it.
So the city in general very much appreciates developers. We realize people are developers or home flippers or property flippers. They come in, they make an investment, and then they need to move on to the next one. We appreciate when you complete the work in a good and look workmanlike fashion.
Thank you.
And because the property is going to be with us for a very long period of time after it is no longer owned by you. So I encourage you to continue good quality of work in any projects that you have around the city.
Thank you. I do understand, like, some flippers, they they're just trying to come do the bare minimum, you know, just to get by. And this is like my fifth one. This is his first one. And that's just, he's been involved on three of of the five that me and my wife have done. And like, he's just even, he started, he wanted to do one with us just because he was so impressed on how much detail we put into into each one, which is, you know, went kind of beyond any other person that he had worked for before. So, you know, we I don't I don't like people calling me, you know, later on and saying this is wrong, that's wrong, this is wrong. I I can't have that. And I see a lot of flippers actually go through that. So, you know.
So do we, sir.
Yeah, so we we don't want that, and we haven't we haven't gone through that. So and I just want to continue that trend.
Good, we hope you do.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on this case? And if not, I would be looking for a motion to approve the review and release the certificate of occupancy.
Shall I move?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? None? Very good.
Thank you so much.
All right, good luck with the sale. Good luck with your next property.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Calling the next matter. So just so there's no confusion, the final matter on the agenda is listed at 6:45, and I think this was just a little result of result of the way it was added to the agenda and scheduling. And the second to the last is listed at 7:00. So we are going to take the 6:45 matter first, and that is EBA 24-21, 58 Cascade Street. This is a request for a special permit under section 181.33 to reinstate a vacant or abandoned mixed-use structure, changing the use to another non-conforming, less detrimental use as a single-family home pursuant to section 181.94 located in the residential B district. All right. Welcome to the meeting, sir. And because I have to have everybody do so, can you tell me your name and city of residence?
Lance Formany, Pittsburgh, Mass.
Okay. And you are the current owner of 58 Cascade Street?
Yes.
Right? Okay. So can you tell us a little bit of how you got here? How did you come to Bebe Forest today?
Well, in a nutshell, I was trying to buy a mobile home. And there was a little bidding war on it. Long story short, she went to rail at the told me about 58 Cascade. She said it's a nothing fancy, but at least it's not on whales. So I ended up pulling the trigger on that. And there was a lot of due diligence that I had to do. I tried to do what I could. Didn't seem like I really knew what I was doing. Long story short, I ended up in a hotel for a few months. So I could no longer afford to stay there. Came back into City Hall and actually I went to see if I can get some housing. They said, because I have kids, they were talking about some emergency housing, something that can accommodate me with this and that. And we brought up the Cascade Street. And I just, we were just talking, and she said, let me bring you over to City Hall because the other building was down the road. And somehow someone got me in with the mayor, and all of a sudden, she got involved. And she was very helpful and just trying to guide me, I guess, and kind of move things right along. Used that emergency housing for someone else. That's really about it. I couldn't do it anymore financially.
Yep.
And here I am.
Okay. So when you when you were introduced to this property, did they did they tell you that you needed to get a special permit?
They did not.
Okay. Did they say, buyer beware, and it's up to you to figure out what you're going to do?
Not really buyer beware. She they showed me the place where you can see that somebody was living in there. There was still some furnishings and there was a new stove, a new fridge, stuff like that. And they didn't really, until they until they got a deposit.
Yep.
And then paperwork started to come in, a whole bunch of paperwork. Caught my eye that I seen something on there that said about the permit. And then I started reaching out, like, what's this mean? What's what's what is this? What's this, what's what's it all about? And then that's when they were trying to, it was kind of squirrely information, and I didn't know anything about it.
Yep.
And that's when, at that point, they already had my money, and the whales were already churning. So, I mean, trying to get my money back, I was using that that money was supposed to be used to get the trailer that I was going to buy. And trying to keep everything in order financially, I basically looked week to week. So I couldn't put out for another deposit to move forward because this other 58 might fall apart. I didn't know what was really happening. So, long story short, I ended up at 58. And then we had to go into a hotel room because I didn't know where to go from there. So that was my deposit.
So it had already been modified to look like somebody was living there as a residence by the time you saw the property?
Yeah, somebody was definitely living there.
Yeah. The previous use of the or the last the last legal use of the property was a barber shop. Right? So as I look at this property, you can see from the front, it's got kind of two storefronts with awnings and a false front, as if it were a little convenience store.
Not very attractive.
Store, yeah. So. But you're proposing to use it as a single-family home?
Yes.
All right. And is there parking off the street for the property?
Yes.
Okay, how many spaces?
Two.
Okay. So two off-street parking spaces? Okay.
Yes.
And I believe this was, I I know you received assistance with the paperwork. It is a pre-existing, non-conforming property, which means that it was already in existence, but there are portions of it that don't meet the setbacks. But it's entitled to grandfathering for the for the structure. So the building commissioner issued a letter stating that you would need a special permit from us to convert the property use from the from the barber shop, which was last used to a single-family residence. And then you need building, plumbing, gas, or wiring permits from the building department. That may be because the person before you did not get permits for the work that they did on the property. And then you'll need a certificate of occupancy. I'd like to go to the building commissioner at this point and just have him give a summary of the facts, if you don't mind. Is that okay? Mr. Commissioner, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this project has been a long time coming. Mr. Formany called me before he even gave the deposit, wanting me to give him a definitive whether whether this will be allowed. And I told him he needs a special permit. I spent a couple of hours between multiple days with Mr. Formany, trying to explain to him that he needs a special permit, that I can't make that determination whether that that's this board. He then came in the office, again confused, as he said. He did speak with the mayor. He also spoke with Maribel upstairs in the in the community development office. He told Mercedes that he was looking for assistance, so Mercedes, for housing assistance, because he was staying in a hotel. So Mercedes sent him up to the planning community development office to speak with Maribel. And then when he spoke with Maribel, he didn't mention anything about the housing because housing assistance, because, as he said, he decided not to do that. The reason that this is before you, as was said, it's a non-conforming lot. And it's a postage stamp-sized lot. And so even though the use is allowed in the in the area because because of all the non-conformities on the site, I determined that to change the use, we needed a special permit where it is a non-conforming structure. I think that bringing it to a single family, having Mr. Formany and his family in there instead of having this vacant property that more likely than not was squatters and they're not necessarily just people living there, but more, it was a greater risk of fire and such. So our office really did support this change to the single family.
Mr. Commissioner, was a temporary occupancy permit issued?
No, nothing has been applied for.
So are there?
Form of intent in this.
Are there interior modifications to the structure which were performed without permit?
We don't know. So what we do is because there will be requirements to change the use from the commercial to the residential, we tell them they need building permits, plumbing permits, and electrical permits, and a new certificate of occupancy because he will have to upgrade some of the energy efficiency factors and such. And we can work with him on that. I know that money is very tight for this. We'll work with him a bit, but there are certain things that he is going to have to meet, and he'll need permits for that.
So Mr. Formany, turning back to you for a moment. I know that there was a plan that was submitted with the application that had been prepared by the prior owners. And that plan was submitted because you needed to have a plot plan showing where the location of the building was. But there is an addition on that's noted on this property that is something you're not proposing to do, correct?
No.
Okay. All right. The standard for us to allow this special permit is to find that the proposed new use, which is a single-family home, is not substantially more detrimental than the prior use, which was a barber shop to the neighborhood. So could you could you offer us any reasons why it would not be substantially worse to have a single-family home than a barber shop at your location? So, for instance, would be, and I I know it's difficult for you to be here today, and I don't mean to make it any more difficult for you. So if I were to offer that there is more traffic associated with a barber shop than there is with a single-family home, would that be correct?
It's a residential neighborhood. A little fixin' up, it would it would fit nicely in that neighborhood.
And you're planning to live there with your family, not rent it out?
Yes, love that.
Okay. I have some other comments, just some things that we talked about during our site visit or my site visit. But I'm going to check with the other board members and see if they have any questions for you first. Okay? Mr. Reynolds, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Byrne, any questions?
No, Mike and I had a meeting with the applicant, in-depth meeting. He was very open and very cordial, absolutely wonderful guy. He's an addition to our city, and I think it's absolutely great. I have some heartburn that I do want to express, but I will express it later on. And I have to say right now that if it were my family, I would do the same exact thing that he did. I would be moving into it without the permits, without the imprimatur received by the fire department and everything else that's necessary. What he did was wrong. What he did was wrong, but in my own mind, it's just, this is the dichotomy about this whole thing. What he did was wrong, but I'd do it too. So, that's all I have to say right now. I'll talk more in close session.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Talbot?
No questions.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I visited the site myself today as well. And so I didn't have the opportunity like Mr. Byrne and Mr. McLaughlin to talk to you about it. Are you currently living in the building now? I knocked on the door, but there was nobody home, so currently living in there. And how long have you been living in there?
About a month now.
About a month, okay. And what are your plans, if I'm within line to ask this? What are your plans to change the facade of the building, the front of it, to make it look more in keeping with what the neighborhood is, which is residential?
That weird front wall thing looks like it's just there, it's not really part of the-
Sure.
Also, I mean, my buddies, cut that down and make it look like a-
Like a residential?
Put up a little picture-type window just for looks, just to make it look like it's, do something with the front windows, paint, just dress it up a little bit so it looks a little bit normal.
Okay, all right, all good things. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McLaughlin?
I don't have any questions or comments. When we, when we get to a point of deliberation, the only conditions that I would want to, you know, discuss, and I made these comments to the applicant, is, you know, give it some time to, you know, put it in a condition that we just get the building so that it does look like a residential building. Maybe a plan in so many months and then completion in a certain timeframe, whatever the board comes up with. And I think it'll be a good reuse of the, of the building, you know? It's all residential, so.
Right.
And it may have been at one point earlier in time, you know? But I'll wait till we get to-
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I, I would agree that the, the, the use as a single-family dwelling with two off-street parking spaces is generally the, the most favorable kind of use the board can look upon. While I was on the site visit, I did discuss some potential modifications on the property, and they're really to the front. That false wall that makes it look like there's a second story. We discussed having the wall cut to a peak with some, whatever trim is necessary, applied. The removal of the awnings. The putting of some mullions and trim around the two front windows, not the side windows, the front windows. Painting the front of the house and painting the concrete steps in the front of the house. So we discussed that and you thought, as long as there was some time to accomplish that, that those were things that you would be able to do?
Yes, that stuff that can-
How long do you think that you would need?
That stuff there, within four months.
Like four months? So by November, for instance?
That should be fine.
Seeing no persons online with their hands up and no other persons here, I'm going to move to board discussion. Is there anything else you wanted to add before we do that?
No.
Nope? Okay, thank you, sir. All right. So I just discussed a few potential modifications to the front of the dwell, of the structure to make it look more like a residential dwelling. Anybody have anything to add or change about that? Go ahead, Mr. Gallagher.
Not to change it, I think they're all good ideas, but I think four months is not really enough time. I think a greater lead weight, like perhaps a year or so, would be more in line with-
A particular situation?
I do, yeah. That's all I have to add.
I'd agree with that.
Mr. McLaughlin?
You know, I think there's some pieces to the puzzle, right? The building commissioner said certain things will have to be brought up to code. I don't know, the answer may or may not mean correct windows. So, you know, also with all the unknowns, maybe give him a year. But I'd, I'd like to give him time to do it right, you know? So, the, the front facade, I think, you know, we would all like to see that removed. Have the front done in clapboard like the rest of the building and put in residential vinyl windows, or whatever type of window, I don't wanna put a name on the windows, but just to make the front look like a residential building and give him some time to do it.
So, I had discussed adding mullions to the existing windows and trim around, which would mean not, not changing the window itself, but changing the appearance.
Yeah.
Would you find that to be within what you contemplate?
Well, I'm gonna use the term loosely, but I call that putting lipstick on the pig, right?
It is.
So, we're, we're making somebody spend money for something that, what's the real value? I'd rather see the money go into energy-efficient windows instead of single-plate windows that don't function, right? They're storefront windows, so I get it, right? We can paint stripes on glass, but what's the long-term goal, right? Have them spend money on a good result.
I think, just looking at the size of the windows, although the windows could be closed into a different size, particularly if you're gonna re-size the front.
Let's not get too picky. I mean, he's, he wants to live there.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be energy-efficient because it has to be because of the laws. So there's not too much that we could add to it, because they're going to be inspecting him closely when he's putting these things in.
I think those expenses and complying with the permits are also a priority over the exterior facade improvements as far as timing goes. So I certainly agree with allowing some more time for completion of these items.
We give him a year, we could request that he bring in a rendition of what would be done, but, you know, it's pretty simple, right? Put in some residential windows, put in some residential clapboard facade, make it look like a house. That's, that's it, right? Give him some time to get settled and do it and cope with everything else he has to deal with in the building department.
Mr. Commissioner, go ahead.
So, I hear what everyone is saying, just as a point of, point of preference, I guess. Because he's converting from commercial to residential, he is gonna have to, he is gonna have to do a HERS rating, most likely?
Mr. Commissioner, could you, I'm sorry, you're, you're becoming a little faint. Could you repeat that last part?
I said he will likely have to go through a HERS rating process in addition to upgrading the house to have, to have hard-wired smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. I think that our department can give him, once he has hard-wired smoke detectors, we can give him a temporary occupancy and work with him over time about the windows, but he's gonna end up having to replace the windows eventually as well. And just to Mr. McLaughlin's point, the mullions won't, won't really do anything. He's going to have to code-wise bring it up, but we can work with him on how long, how long it takes him to do that.
Am I to understand that the transfer of real estate took place without an approved smoke certificate?
I don't know. I, I don't get those smoke certificates. And they're, I don't believe they're logged in OpenGov, so I can't see. That would be a question for Mr. Fromini. But I believe that since it's not a residential house yet, 26F doesn't apply, since he's occupying it without a certificate of occupancy.
Mr. Fromini, were you dealing with a Realtor on the other opposing side, the sellers? Did they have a Realtor?
Honestly, I didn't really have a Realtor. There was a listing person, I didn't have anyone on my side.
Who was the listing person on their side? Do you remember their name?
Oh, the Rado Westerhug. I'd have to pull up the paperwork. But as far as smoke detectors and all that, I mean, it's, that place is loaded with them. I mean, they're everywhere, they're all brand-new.
But are they hardwired?
Oh, yeah.
They are hardwired?
Yeah.
Okay. It, it's illegal to transfer a property-
Yeah, I'm sure. It must have had it, I'm sure, because it's all brand, you can tell you, they're all, they're all new.
Yeah, and, and my concern is that if a Realtor participated in the sale, if an attorney participated in the sale and they did so without the required smoke certificates, that really bothers me and I would like to know the names of the persons who did that. If you look through your paperwork, can you let me know who was involved with the sale for, as a Realtor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, they might have had the 26F, I just have no way of confirming it.
Oh, I, I understand the records are probably not available to you right now. So, if there is a smoke certificate, great. If there is not, that's, that's not the way to transfer property, so. But, Mr. Fromini, I think you were participating in this sale out of need and, you know, without the assistance that would be required to go through and buy, convert this type of- All right. So I, I think as far as being inclined to grant the special permit, I do believe that the proposed single-family use is less detrimental than the barber shop. That was the last legal use. Going through the special permit conditions of Section 181.94, which I'm just gonna bring up. So, social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal, I would say that provision is satisfied by providing a single-family housing to a family requiring it. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. There are two off-street parking spaces on the property and the traffic flow would be reduced from the use as a barber shop, resulting in improvement to traffic in the neighborhood and parking. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. The property is served by municipal water and sewer, right? You do not have a well, you do not have a septic system.
No.
Neighborhood character and social structure. The neighborhood is residential in nature and the proposed use would fit in with the residential nature, nature of the neighborhood. Impacts on the natural environment, including drainage. Other than changes to the front, you're not considering any other modifications to the building. So there are no other impacts. Potential fiscal impact, including impact on city services, tax base, and employment. The improvement of the property as a single-family dwelling may result in increased property tax revenue to the city. The additional residents of one family may provide some impact on the school system. Both are negligible in nature. With that, Mr. McLaughlin, could you propose some wording for conditions?
The- That the residential, I think, we'll look at a one-year timeframe to allow the applicant to restore the front of the building to residential design. I don't know if the board wants to, maybe in six months, have them come in with rendition or concept of what's gonna be done. Like you said, we've got the moving parts with the building department and all that. That's really about it, you know? Again, windows, facade material, you know, the concrete. He said he's gonna paint it, that's, I think, really all you can do to it, right? And I'm assuming the front door will have to be, become a residential-style door and the windows and the trim and that the front, upper area be removed and restore it to, you know, the roof line, in keeping with the roof line of the building, so.
So I'm going to paraphrase that to the following. The permit holder, on the date of review, in December, whatever the date is. Shall provide a plan or list of work to restore the appearance of the facade, including windows, door, siding, roofline modification, and painting in a good and working-like fashion for board review. And then work to be completed within 12 months from the date of the decision. And my, when I say plan, Mr. Fromini, I don't mean like an engineered plan showing a drawing. Bring in a depiction of what you're gonna do and a list of the work that you're gonna do, okay? So I think, I think I gave you some more specific options and, and Mr. McLaughlin is giving you some leeway on kinda how to, how to accomplish that, so. That would put our next review in December, on December-
Ten.
Ten, thank you, Mercedes. And you would be back before us with a depiction of what you're gonna do and a list of the work you're gonna do. And then the work would need to be done within 12 months of our decision. With that condition, can I have a motion in the affirmative on approval of the special permit?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion on ZBA 2024-21 for the property at 58 Cascade Street for Lance Fromini. Did I say that?
Fromini, yes.
Good, I got it right. For the special permit request under 181-33.
Mr. Talbot or Mr. Gallagher, do we have a second on that motion? Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Byrne, would you like to recuse yourself from this vote?
No.
Okay. Would you like to make a statement on the motion?
Let me go last, please.
Okay, I, I don't know that anyone else has a statement to make on the motion. So you are, you may go ahead. So you are, you may go ahead.
I'm, I'm not motion, making a motion on the motion. I'm not making a statement on the motion. I'm making a statement on the vote.
Would you like to make that statement after the vote is taken?
Yes.
All those in favor of the, of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Four to one, so the motion carries. The special permit is allowed. Mr. Byrne would like to make a statement, however.
Lance, you're a wonderful person. You're a great father, and you're a good member of the community, and I want to say that right out off the bat. That's not the reason I voted no. Mike and I go out every, before every meeting, and we visit all the sites, and we drive throughout the city. And we see the blight that this city has gotten into. Absentee landlords, people who don't care about things, throwing stuff, uncaring, throwing stuff, mattresses on the street. It's just the downward slope. I said before, I would do what you did, but what you did was against all of our regulations. Everything in our book says that you need to go step by step when you purchase a property. I cannot say that I condone such an act, so that's why I voted no, because the act was bad. And with everything else that I see going on throughout this city, I wanna put my foot down somewhere. And it's not on you because it's passed. You, you already got it. But I want people to know that I look at this city, and people just don't seem to care anymore, but Joe Byrne cares. Okay? That's, that's why I voted no. Thank you for putting up with me. Off my soapbox and onward to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. We're all glad that you are here to hold us up to standard.
You try.
I agree with you that we see, and, and this is not about you in particular, Mr. Fromany at all, but we see a litany of people who come to us, and they say they have bought a property, and they don't know, and then, or somebody else has done something, or, and so there have been a series of actions of people without, without complying with the law, and then the problem comes to us, and, you know, the suggestion is that we Band-Aid over it. And that pushes us farther and farther down, away from kind of compliance with, with the law. At any rate, for you in particular, I, I wish you good health and much happiness at your new home with your family. And I hope the compliance with the building department is easier. I know they will work with you to make the process as smooth as possible, and we will see you in December. Good luck, sir. Have a good night.
Good night.
Nice meeting you, Lance.
Have a good evening.
Calling the final matter, ZBA 2023-15, 348 Elm Street. This is the continuance of a request for a special permit under Section 181.332 with Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to reinstate a vacant or abandoned non-conforming mixed-use structure, changing the use to another non-conforming, less detrimental use as a duplex pursuant to Section 181.94 located in Residential C. Welcome.
Good evening, Board.
Can you please tell the Board your name and city of residence?
Nadella Antonio, Pittsburgh, Math.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have been before us a number of times because we recognized at the filing of your petition that you were handling two projects at once, and both could not proceed. At that time, you were working on, I believe, 8385 Marshall Street.
I was helping out a friend there, yeah.
Yep. As well as this property, we had the collapse of the building, and the Board undertook the decision because the building needed to come down for everyone's safety.
Correct.
That, but it was also clear to the Board that you were not prepared to go forward to toll any time limitations until July, and I believe it's July 31st-
I believe so.
-of 2024, or in other words, the end of this month. So what we have been doing is kind of holding you on pause, with the exception of making sure that the demolition occurred, okay? And in that time period, I believe, 8385 Marshall, it didn't work out. Somebody else took it over, and, and the special permit-
Correct. I was not the owner of that property.
Yeah.
I was helping out a friend.
You were helping out a friend?
Correct, yeah. AG Greenflip.
Okay. So that property, 8385 Marshall, clearly did not resolve itself in the way that the Board found satisfactory.
Yeah, like I said, my only involvement, I was trying to help out AG Flip with transmission language barrier and come help him with some meetings when he couldn't.
Okay. So on this property, you are the owner?
In this property, I am the sole owner, correct.
And do you, are you prepared at this point in time to move forward with the project?
That is correct.
So you have submitted a plans, a, a set of plans to us that were dated February 2nd, 2024.
I think I've submitted multiple. The first time we did this, I submitted them, and then I've changed some stuff around for the building department.
What is the date of the plan you are looking at right now?
This one is unfortunately November 30th, 2021. I don't have a copy of the updated one. I thought I did, but I have submitted, like I said, which is pretty much the same. The only difference is the R value for the insulation, a little stuff like that inside the property.
All right. Could you approach for a moment, please? And look at this set of plans? This is the set of plans that we have.
That is correct.
Is this the most recent set of plans?
That is correct, yeah.
Are you proceeding under these set of plans?
Yes, I am. These are the same, you see, just colorful and just a few different pages. They have the insulation R values inside are different.
So what I'm looking at, there's a plan date right there?
That is correct, yeah.
What is your plan date?
November 30th, 2021. These are the ones that I submitted when I first did. So what I did was I had, there was a request to get a re-engineering and a re-standup today, which is the standard.
But you're not proceeding on these, right?
No, I'm proceeding on the one that you have. I just still have a copy of it, so I have something with me in case you have a question to try to answer.
Okay. So I, I'm, can you answer questions when you don't have the plan that we-
Yeah, I should be able to. Definitely. Like I said, the, most of the different stuff that we change were the R value for the insulation for the new-
The current plan is February 2nd, 2024.
Got it.
Okay. All right. Please give us an overview of what you're looking at doing.
So the goal would be to make this a two-family. It used to be a sauna place. It had two units inside, and it had a cabinet-making shop in it when I purchased it. I had no intention of keeping it like that. I wanted to fix it up. The goal would be to make it a two-family. Two or three houses down, when I say about 100 feet, I was able to purchase a lot to accommodate the parking for it. It currently only has one parking spot in the building itself, but I was, I was told I had to get, I knew from prior job, projects that I've done in town and houses that I own, that we need to have proper parking, so I was able to find a lot near there for the proper parking.
Could you, could you pause for a moment? You said that there's a space associated with the house?
That is correct.
Where?
334 Elm Street, which I think I have a certified plot plan as well.
Just, the house occupies the entire lot. Where, where is the-
So it's three houses to the right. It's 100 feet away, if I'm not mistaken.
So you bought a lot on which you, you want to make parking?
That is correct.
Is there any parking on the building lot?
There is right now. There's one parking spot.
Where?
So if you're looking at the building to the left, you should see a little spot there in the left, near the red fence. That's what they use for parking. Facing the house on the left-hand side. It might not be-
I think maybe there's room to put a car, but I don't think there's a legal parking spot because you require a three-foot setback and a nine-foot wide driveway.
Correct. I think it is nine by 18. I don't think it has a setback because it has stairs going down from existing, which I'm not gonna use that as a parking spot. That's why I obtained the, the lot.
So the set of plans that I'm looking at, it appears to have all of the, all the interior plans and the exterior walls. It doesn't appear to have a plot plan. And if somebody does see it within their packet, please let me know.
Like I said, I submitted all this information, but I think it was a lot of information that you could use for the plot plan.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, for the property. And I know I have a new set of plot plan for the parking, which shows all the stripes and the three-foot in the snow location. I just don't have, I don't have it physically. I have it on my phone. I can show you, but I have a plot plan as well for the property. But it's not certified with the lines. They do have, like I actually said, people who want now-
This is certified. It has a stamp.
But it's not, it doesn't have the lines. It doesn't have the three-foot for the snow. It doesn't have-
It doesn't have the-
Yeah, but I do have that.
Okay, so it's a sort of way of the lot, but it doesn't have it marked out? Okay.
I do have that. I'm pretty sure I submitted it, but I can resend it. I have it on my phone if you wanna see it, or I can email it to you, or I can do that later on.
Let's bring it up later on.
Okay.
All right. Can you move forward with the overview, please?
Huh?
I'm sorry, could you move forward with the overview, please?
So yeah, that would be the goal. Would be to make it a two-family. Have the parking, like I said, within 100 feet near it, and that will be the goal. I know that, looking at the property in front of it, I know that we're big on greenery. It doesn't have much greenery in the front. I can remove, if you look at the stairs on the bottom under the two doors, I can remove those gates and put something under there for plants and stuff. There will be more greenery in the parking spot down the street, but that's pretty much it. Like I said, I'm ready to start the project. I got the funds available. I have the time available. I got the guys available, so we're ready to get that rockin' rollin'.
How many bedrooms in each unit?
Three in each.
How many baths?
Two.
Are you going to keep it for rental? Are you going-
I keep on my properties, yep. I'll keep it.
Are you going to reside in the property?
Reside?
Are you going to live there?
No, I'm not gonna reside. I'm not gonna. I got approached by a few teachers from across the street from the daycare that would love to be near there for their jobs, so that will be the goal.
Is there any change to the footprint from the prior building?
There is not. We're using the same foundation. We're just gonna build up format. We're gonna, we plan on adding another floor. It had another floor in there. You can't really see from the front, but it was kinda like illegal floor, so we're gonna make it on the floor on it, or the upstairs.
So how many stories will it be?
Two.
Right now, there, this property was, of course, used as a sauna, steam house at one-
Sauna, it was a two, it had two apartments, a sauna, and the guy had a cabinet-making shop in it. Whoever the cabinet guy is, was-
There are a number of small rooms in concrete that are still there at the-
Which we're gonna use, correct.
How are you going to use it?
So it'll be like a mudroom. It'll be a closet. It'll be using that sort of things. You can see on the print what we're doing. Yeah, that, that whole thing is solid.
There was, I, I wanna say there were five or six entryway doors to these little rooms in the back. You're gonna use six little rooms?
So if, let me see if I can see a breakout of the print so I can show you.
You can approach.
All right, so you can see here, and you might see the print. You can see the one, two, three, the six doors, same, and one, two, three, so we're planning on adding it.
Okay.
Adding doors to it.
Thank you. So the Board previously ordered that you either, that you cap or take down the foundation after the demolition as a, as a safety issue. And you chose to put a, a flooring deck on there as well.
Correct, so that, that's the cap. It's all cap, the top.
I, I just wanna be clear that we, we didn't order you to put that on there. The, the choice was to do that or to collapse the foundation and rebuild, so. Can you describe what's, what's going on in the front of the house? You're gonna have two entrances?
That is correct. Right now, with you, what you see open, I'm sure you drove the house. It'll be doors, and it'll be windows. I just don't wanna frame for any of that yet, since I don't have a permit for it to do that. That is correct. We're gonna have a set of stairs facing each other to go up, and bottoms.
Is the building going to, the interior is going to extend all the way out to where it was before?
Correct. The existing foot, footprints is not gonna get added. It's just gonna stay how it is.
There are three or four bollards in the front of the house, I think, for protection of the utility meters. Is that where the, where the utility meters are going back?
So I kinda wanna put it on the sides. I haven't determined that yet. There's a huge service going there because of what it was before. It's a thousand amps. I mean, I don't even know, a lot of buildings here that have a thousand amps. So I wanna see if I can spread it and do each ends. That way the front doesn't have those wires coming how they do now. I do plan on keeping the bollards, though. It's a very tough corner. Even for us, when we were doing the demo, putting the trash, trash there was a hassle. We gotta coordinate with the Pittsburgh Police to help, help with that all the time. So I think the bollards would be a great idea to keep if we can on there. If we're gonna-
Has there been any thought given to creating parking on-site as opposed to on the separate lot?
I don't think I have four parking spots to do it. I would like some of the back space to be used for some kind of a grass and for them to be where they can hang out. I don't think I, that's why I obtained that lot, you know, I, I, they only have that one parking spot, and they, and you can see in the picture, people park in front of that on the street, you know, so I'm trying to get, that's why I got that lot, so I can bring all the, everybody there. It'll be very tough to get something in there. I don't see that happening, unfortunately. Like I said, very small space in the back, which will be nice for the tenants to have somewhere to hang out.
I, I don't think it would be possible for you to put parking in the rear because the-
Foundation, the corner.
On the side, and the neighbor has a retaining wall, so I-
The only, only option that I can't really do, but it would be to lift up the building and do parking on the bottom. That's something we've done in Boston before, but that's why I got the lot.
The other option would be to step back the front of the building and have four parking spaces in the front.
Yeah. They'll have, yeah.
So you have a foundation that seems to be compromised in a number of different places with large holes that have been cut out for ductwork, large cracks, portion in the front is missing. The Board, I'm one member on the Board, but the reuse of that foundation is, is, does not make, make me want to approve the project because of the condition it's in. And like I think we said to a few persons before you, we are looking for people who are renovating buildings in the city- you, we are looking for people who are renovating buildings in the city to put, you know, good workmanship into them so that when, when we are left with the building, the building is, is a good rest.
That is correct. I understand.
And, and that, that foundation is, is not a mark of good quality construction.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not a foundation guy. That's not my field, but I can definitely have a foundation engineer if it helps you stamp and let you know and give you something, hey, this foundation is good enough, which we, we did approach a foundation guy when we did this before we even did anything, because I would love to make the foundation bigger. That was my goal. But I can get you that paperwork, no problem. That way, you can feel safer and know that, hey, we have something on paper saying the foundation is okay. I mean, you can see the weight that's on there from before that got removed. I mean, that's some heavy, heavy concrete up there, and the foundation, like I said, I think is very, very strong. I know it looks like it's not because there's holes everywhere, but we, yeah.
There are holes everywhere. There are holes everywhere. There are cracks everywhere. You know, and it's, it's not a field...
And it just looks like that because we haven't fixed anything. I don't want to go ahead and do stuff without a permit, you know?
I'm going to let other people ask some questions for a bit, but first, I don't think we have anybody in public participation, but I just need to check. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak on this matter, on for or against? Is there any person present? There are none. I'm going to move to the board. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to kind of reset the clock a bit. You know, when you first came in before us, I think that the critical item we had at the time was the building was collapsing, right? So, we took care of that piece of it, and you had presented a plan, and I think in general, the board's consensus to you was that we would look favorably upon some type of two-dwelling unit, but we didn't accept your plan. And, you know, I think over the course of some of these meetings, I tried to mention that to you on a regular basis. You know, then the board also wanted you to cover what was open for safety reasons, and over time, we've had, all of us have had chances to visit the property and digest it and kind of, we wanted the building to come down so we could digest it and look at it. You know, just to be real open and frank, I can't approve that project as submitted with that foundation like that. It really all needs to come down and start fresh. Whether we hear from somebody that says, yeah, this has got good bones, this is a, this building was a sauna with a bunch of small eight-foot rooms in it, and to have this kind of haphazardly converted into housing, to me, it doesn't look like a long-term, a right path for us to go down. Looking at some of the land that got developed in the neighborhood, the neighborhood has really transformed itself with a combination of single-family homes and some condos. I think that something could be put on that property with parking in the front of it and create some setback, because I'm definitely not a fan of having what we call zero setback, where the building is, meets the city sidewalk. But before we go too far down a path of this particular project, I, I really want us to take a look at something that, that's different. I just, I don't want to see us waste any more time because we're, we've been, you know, working on this project for several years.
Thank you.
I have to go along with Mr. McLaughlin. We both surveyed that property closely, looked at it, looked at the foundation, looked at the things that are, or that could be done, and I have to say, too, that foundation has got to go. It's too compromised.
And I'm not making comments about structural. It, it's just, if you look at it, it's like Stonehenge, and then we're going to, you know, try to convert it into some type of housing. I think it just, like all the old buildings in Pittsburgh, they get to a point where, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to vote favorably on a project, it should be done properly, you know, and we can create, have a chance to create some parking and some green space and accomplish what needs to be accomplished.
Mr. Talbot, I am interested because you are the, the building professional we have on the board.
Have you had anybody take a look at your foundation?
That is correct. I can bring in some paperwork for it. Like I said, the building before had way more weight than what it's going to have now, and you can see what it has now with the concrete, and it had way more concrete than we demoed. And keep in mind, like you said, you're a builder. You know the foundation. I think what they're looking at is the walls on the side,
Yeah.
but the foundation's from the bottom of that, which you can't see if you don't go in the building.
I would agree. It's not really aesthetic.
You can't see it because you don't go in the building. That's not the foundation, but that's the foundation wall that lies on top of the foundation. But like I said, I can put it on paperwork. I can have an engineer tell us, hey, you need to repair this. You need to do that, you know, but I, I would prefer to keep it how it is. I can fix whatever needs to be done for the looks of the foundation to be done. That's why I obtained that parking lot before, because Barbara Dora before told me to get the parking lot, and I should be upset, not that I'm holding up to that, you know, but like I said, I can get an engineer to tell us, hey, you know what, the foundation is no good. And if he said it's no good, then it's no good. But like I said, he, they already looked at the foundation, and I got a green light for the foundation, and I can get paperwork on that from an engineer. I would prefer not to move the foundation, not do the foundation over, not push it back. That's how the building was. I mean, if the building didn't tear down, which I spent thirty-five thousand dollars demoing it, if the building never, if that never happened to the building, I could have just found a way to say, you know what, this is how that guy sold it to me. I want to keep it. It used, I mean, it's, see, as commercial or whatever it is, and I want to make it residential. I don't...
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of your project, again, and I, and I'm not here to, I don't need somebody to come and give me a, show me a stamp that the concrete is structurally strong. It's a hundred-year-old concrete.
Yeah.
It is, but look at it. It's not four walls. We're going to have, we're going to build a residential home that has eight cement rooms in it. It's just, it's...
So, that would be from the inside. From the outside, you have your four walls. Inside, whatever layout we do, whatever layout we do to make that work.
And back when we originally met, all of us had concerns about setback and creating some setback, so that's just kind of, you know, I don't want to...
But I'm not going, I'm not going forward on a plan that's not going to get... Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah.
Approved, so, you know, I want to, obviously, let's hear from some of the board members.
Sorry to interrupt all you were saying.
Where we can, you know?
Mr. Talbot, I am, I'm curious about whether you have any comments or, or questions on, on the construction that is proposed, on the foundation that is there, on, on the inclusion of cement, cement-walled rooms in the back?
I mean, the, the cement-walled rooms in the back really have no bearing on anything that we're doing. I like the layout of the building. I like the design of the building. I understand it's kind of a tight squeeze, but if he has an architect or an engineer sign off on what is there for the foundation, and it's still usable, why not let him use it? There, there are treatments or like a surface treatment you can use on the outside of the foundation to make it look more appealing when he's done. I wouldn't say just go and scrap the whole thing just because it's unsightly.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Well, I certainly wish to associate myself with Michael on this. Currently, the way it is with lack thereof setbacks, I don't feel it's an improvement to the area. I'm not in favor of it.
So, this, this property, and I'm, sorry, Mr. Reynolds, I wonder if you have any questions or comments?
Well, thank you. No questions.
This property is a structure that was demoed, and we are very specifically within the demo timeline for reconstruction, and if it was not considered abandoned, reuse. So, I'm trying to think about what, what is, what kind of relief and use is required from this board as opposed to what could be done of right, as of right. And I, I think it's the two-family use that requires the relief from this board. It's a large building. It's a large foundation. And I, I would prefer that the front be stepped back to offer either green space or parking to the neighborhood and the residents of this dwelling. I am not opposed to a two-family use, and I walked the distance to the parking, proposal parking lot. I'm not opposed to that lot being provided for some of the parking. But I, I must agree that I'm, I'm not in favor of the particular design that is before us. I, I also want to be sure that you are ready to proceed with the project construction in an expeditious manner once, if you do receive approval.
I can have it winter-ready by less than six months. I got all of the materials that are property that I own in Pittsburgh right now ready, and I have a lot of material there on site. I can have that weather-tight in less than six months.
So, I, I, I think the way forward for the board, we have to deal with the plan that is in front of us because we can't make up a plan for you. We can look at a plan and agree or not agree with it, but we can't make up a plan that is not before us. And I think that I need to take an indication of the board on whether or not they would be inclined to consider approval of this plan. So, as an indication, are you favorably inclined, Mr. Byrne? Mr. Talbot, are you favorably inclined to approve this plan?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher, are you favorably inclined to approve?
No.
Mr. McLaughlin, are you favorably inclined to approve this plan?
Unfortunately, not as submitted, but I am in favor of a, a plan to make it a two-family.
Yeah.
Or use the property in some form.
Yes. Mr. Reynolds is unfortunately not a voting member, but I always welcome his opinion. And, and for me, I, I would be interested in seeing the engineer's opinion of the foundation, but this plan, which has not stepped back from the front, I, I am not in favor of. I, I have a lot of skepticism about reuse of the foundation, like I said, given the amount of holes in it. So, you've received kind of a non-favorable indication from enough board members to state that you would not receive a favorable vote if we put it to a formal vote. So, the options would be to request leave-to-withdraw without prejudice, which means that you can come back at any later point, any later point in time. And I think you've received indication from the board members that they are favorably inclined in general towards a two-family property. Or you can request a continuance and submit a modified plan. Do you have...
I just, I, I feel like I have all the requirements to do this. I'm not a professional at it, but I know, I feel like I have all the requirements to do this. I just don't know. I don't want to say yes and no because I don't really know, but I feel like I have all the requirements to do this. Looking at all your meetings online and seeing how you guys approach different projects, but I feel like I have all the requirements to do this. I have the parking spot. It's within that amount of feet. I'm not making this any bigger than what it was before. The building had to get torn down. I tore it down. I spent money on that. I don't know. I feel like I have all the requirements to do this. I don't see what the problem is. I do see that you want the building stepped back. I can give you an address of buildings that are not stepped back on that street. How we're making it better, I'm making it better because I'm making a two-family for families. I'm providing parking for a building next door as well that is a three-family that has no parking. On 334, this, next door, the three-family that's doing there has zero parking, which I was trying to provide parking for them as well. It's the same deal. They, I mean, I feel like I have everything we need to make, to go forward. I don't understand what the problem is. If I do got to go do a continuance, then we'll do a continuance. I'll involve a lawyer. Unfortunately, I don't want to go that route. Like I said, I think I have everything to make this happen, and I think I've done everything you guys asked. I put the fence up. I demoed the building. You know, I got the parking lot next, a few blocks over like they told me to do. You know, it used to be commercial. I'm taking it, I'm taking it off commercial, making it residential. I just, I, I don't see a problem. The foundation that you've seen now does look messed up. I understand what you're saying, but the foundations under that, those are just walls that are on top of the foundation, which we can fix no problem, and I can get paperwork on that. That's no problem. I'm not going more forward on the street. I'm keeping everything where it was before. Unfortunately, I don't have much green. I'll be honest about that, which I can add green under it. I haven't seen any projects in the town where we have pushed back, to be honest, to make parking in the foundation. I can't think of any, in any years that I've seen stuff from the board, which is why we try to provide parking spot nearby. You know, like I said, I think I have every requirement we need to make this work. I don't understand why not. I know ideally would be to tear that whole thing down and make a parking spot for the people that don't have it, you know, but unfortunately, I haven't invested money in it, you know, so I'm trying to see what I can do to fight back and make this happen.
Well, I, I think that, you know, you certainly bought the property, and then the collapse happened from the snow.
Correct.
Which is, of course, not what...
Yeah, it's unfortunate. Yeah.
It's certainly been a circumstance that is unfortunate in this case. However, what I'm trying to do is avoid taking a vote, which results in denial of the petition, which would mean a two-year ban on a...
Yeah, which I won't, I won't, yeah.
Which I don't want to have you two, because I, you've received, I think, an indication that generally the two-family use could be looked on favorably by the board. I would propose that you... How many cases are we up to in September? We really got a lot, don't we? I think we're up to twelve. You should never give me anything. Yeah. So, that brings us up to nine?
Mm-hmm.
And whatever is coming through.
And whatever is going to come through.
So, the zoning, if I'm not mistaken, I can have a two-family there, correct?
So, what you have is a pre-existing, non-conforming building. It does not meet lots setbacks. It does not meet lots of size. It's pre-existing, and you're modifying it to a different use. If you were building a new building on a lot that had all of the dimensions met,
Mm-hmm.
you could build a two-family by right.
So, now, by right, if I keep it the same zoning, I don't have to come here, right?
If you keep it the same use and you build...
Which is use as what?
It's the last use that was, that was a legal use.
I'm just trying to spin it way around. I just want to do it right. I would like to make it a two-family, but if I have to keep it how it is, for me to accomplish... but if I have to keep it how it is, for me to accomplish what I need to do, or do a business how it was before, then I don't have to do that.
So, um, looking at the issue of how do you work around the zoning is, is something that you would either do by talking to the building commissioner or consulting with a zoning attorney, who can talk to you about different options for ways to use the property. But I, I repeat to you, the board, you know, has indicated it would look favorably on a two-family, it's just the particular design. Okay? I'm going to, I want to put you on for September, but it's going to be a very long. Um, and I want you to have enough time to look at your different options without delaying you too much. Would you have, I, I, I'm thinking that we should put you to October, which is October the eighth. It's, I, I know, it's three months.
The sooner the better, whatever you have in mind, the sooner the better. I mean, like I said, I just wanna move forward, you know, get on it tomorrow, see if I should just keep it, what it is now. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I'm able to build what was there before if I keep it as is. You know, and I don't wanna do that, I wanna make the right steps and do it right, you know?
All right. So let's put you on for review in September, September tenth. You'll need to be patient, um, because you'll, we'll be at, towards the end of the meeting.
Oh yeah, that's fine, no breaky. I appreciate you even have, having me on that date.
And I'd like to entertain a motion on the continuance, please.
Make that motion until, what, was it November?
September tenth.
September eighth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So we're gonna continue to September tenth. And, uh, we'll be happy to hear again. We'll need to have you sign a continuance and, look at your options, or then- Thank you. I do not have anything else, so, so-
Am I set?
Yet, we're continued until September.
Appreciate your help, I'm sorry to keep it so late.
More motion?
Thank you.
I would love a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Tony's.
Meeting is adjourned.